Okay, folks, let's get this meeting under order. It's a regular meeting of the Community Redevelopment Agency of Boca Raton. Today's Monday, July 14th, 2025. The time is 1:30 PM. Thanks for everyone for coming. Before we start, please, let's have a moment of silence for the people and the unspeakable tragedy in Texas Hill Country. Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Ms. Maxwell, please call her all.
Chair Victor.
Here.
Vice Chair Thompson.
Thankful to be here.
Commissioner Drucker.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Nocles.
Here.
Commissioner Singer.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Brown, I hear that there are amendments on the agenda.
Yes, we propose the deletion of Item 6B, Resolution 2025-07 CRA. The appeal has been withdrawn by the appellant.
Very good. If so, I'll entertain a motion to amend the agenda accordingly.
So moved to delete.
Very well. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you. Now we'll move on to the minutes. If there's any corrections to the minutes of June 9th, 2025, if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Nocles. You're second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Thompson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, the minutes are approved. There are no presentations today, so we will proceed to quasi judicial and related public hearings. And Ms. Maxwell, you have the honor of reading the title to the DDI that's going on today. Thank you.
DDI IDA Number CRP 2401. Consideration of an Individual Development Approval IDA of the Boca Raton Community Redevelopment Agency for the Madura Boca Multi-Family Residential Project on the approximately 1.71 acres generally located at 400 South Dixie Highway to authorize construction of a 306-unit, 12-story, 416,137 square-foot multifamily residential building with a maximum height not to exceed 131 feet, 2 inches, with architectural features with a maximum total height not to exceed 141 feet, 11 inches, with a seven-level, 147,321-square-foot internal parking structure that includes one level of below-grade parking along with related improvements, including sidewalk and landscaping modifications on an approximately 0.12-acre adjacent city-owned lot located along Southeast 3rd Street and construction of a new six-foot-wide sidewalk along South Dixie Highway, together with a technical deviation from Paragraph 24B1 of the DDI Development Order to reduce the required number of off-street parking spaces from 538 spaces to 468 spaces, a reduction of 70 spaces, including an abandonment of a 12-foot-wide utility easement and a portion of a 15-foot-wide easement for roadway purposes, including a transfer of 127,500 square feet of office-equivalent development, 44,282 square feet from downtown SubArea A, and 83,218 square feet from downtown SubArea B, based upon an equivalency factor for institutional peak-hour traffic generating to downtown SubArea D, resulting in approximately 168,866 square feet of office-equivalent development remaining in downtown SubArea A, and approximately zero square feet, 46,199 square feet, of institutional non-peak-hour traffic generating of office-equivalent development remaining in downtown SubArea B, and approximately 412,768 square feet of office-equivalent development remaining in downtown SubArea D, and including a conversion of uses, providing for repealer, providing an effective date.
Well done. Mr. Shad, will please review the quasi judicial procedure that will govern this public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item Number 6 on this afternoon's agenda will be heard using the quasi judicial procedures which are listed on the last page of your agenda. The item can, must be reviewed by the board members based on competent and substantial evidence presented to them as through this hearing or prior to the hearing in the backup. And all testimony of anybody who wishes to speak needs to be sworn.
Very good, thank you. Now we'll ask if there's any ex parte disclosures, starting with Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've had several conversations about this project, going back several months with Ellie Zacharitis, counsel for the applicant, Adam Beakley, counsel for the applicant, Ignacio Diaz, on behalf of the applicant, Todd Richardson, on behalf of the applicant, John Gromaldi, and the conversations that I had relative to the disclosures I just made all relate to the merits of the project. I believe that concludes my ex parte disclosures.
Thank you very much, sir. Ms. Nocles.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a meeting last week in person with Ellie Zacharitis and John Gromaldi, and also spoke just before the meeting started with John Gromaldi and Ignacio Diaz, and just those two were about the merits of this project. And about a year and a half ago, I had a meeting with Ignacio Diaz and Ellie Zacharitis on a separate item where this project was mentioned, but nothing in detail.
Very good. Mr. Singer.
Thank you. I've spoken with John Gromaldi of Mill Creek, Thomas Zeigman, and Adam Beakley, counsel for the applicant, about the merits of this project. Shortly before this meeting began, I saw Jose Padua and Todd Richardson of P6 are also involved with the application and just said hello. Our conversation was not substantive, and I've been by the site many times. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Ms. Drucker.
Thank you. Likewise, I've had a meeting about a year and a half ago with Ellie Zacharitis and Ignacio Diaz. I had a meeting a few weeks ago, which is on the calendar, with John Gromaldi and Ignacio Diaz. I've had several conversations with Ellie Zacharitis, and everything is on the record, and all emails are there as well.
Mr. Chair. Yes, sir. May I supplement? At some point in the past, I probably corresponded or communicated with Ellie Zacharitis about this project, although I don't recall specific discussions, the merits with her. Thank you. The record so reflects. Thank you very much. And I myself also had conversations with Mr. Beakley, Mr. Zeigman, Mr. Gromaldi, Ms. Zacharitis, Mr. Diaz in a conference call last week, and also exchanging pleasantries and hellos this time, multiple conversations with Mr. Beakley and Ms. Zacharitis throughout the months of this, and perhaps a couple of conversations with Mr. Diaz. Again, I've also submitted other information on the record to the clerk before this meeting. So with that being said, any person wishing to speak and testify at this hearing, please stand while the clerk administers the oath.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that any testimony that you may give today will be truthful and accurate? Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Mr. Brown, please.
Thank you, Chair. Jacob Gurman, Planner with the Development Services Department, will make the presentation on Item CRP 2401.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Gurman. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Jacob Gurman, Planner 2 for the city, and I'll be presenting the Modera Boca Project located at 400 South Dixie Highway. The project is proposing to redevelop the approximately 1.7-acre property. The property is owned Downtown Development and Regional Impact and has a future land-use designation of Commercial Business District. The applicant is requesting an individual development approval for the authorization of the construction of a 12-story, 306-unit, approximately 416,137-square-foot multifamily residential building with a maximum height not to exceed 131 feet, 2 inches, with architectural features with a maximum total height of 141 feet, 11 inches, and a seven-level integrated parking structure that includes one level below grade totaling 147,321 square feet, along with related onsite and offsite landscaping and hardscaping improvements, together with a technical deviation from Paragraph 24B1 of the DDI Development Order to reduce the required number of off-street parking spaces from 538 spaces to 468 spaces, with the abandonment of a 12-foot-wide utility easement and a portion of a 15-foot-wide easement, and a transfer of office-equivalent development from downtown SubArea A and B to SubArea D, including a conversion of uses within downtown SubArea D. The property, which currently consists of the approximately 21,921-square-foot Arbor Professional Office Park development, will be demolished to accommodate the project. The project has frontage along South Dixie Highway and is adjacent to a city-owned lot, which has additional property frontage along Southeast 3rd Street. The adjoining the property and the city-owned lot to the east is a north-south alleyway. The alley connects Southeast 3rd Street, 4th Street, and 5th Street, and all vehicular access, including deliveries and services, to the property will be provided via the alley. There is a portion of the alley that is adjacent to the property and 33 Southeast 4th Street that is currently unpaid with gravel. This portion of the alley will be paved with the project. The alley is 20 feet wide and can accommodate two vehicular travel lanes. All parking for the property will be provided via the internal parking structure, which will be connected to the alley via a 24-foot-wide drive aisle near the southeast corner of the property, and an 18-foot-wide loading area is also provided along the alley. The ground floor will consist of a combination of interior and exterior active uses along the western facade for the residents, which includes features such as office space, clubhouse, clubhouse and fitness center, bicycle room, yoga long, putting green, and more. All exterior active uses are located underneath the covered logias, which are only accessible via gate access from the residence. There are private residential units on each level, which include a variety of unit types that include studio, 1-, 2-, and 3-bedroom units, and penthouse units. Other residential amenities are proposed on the seventh level of the project that include a pool and an interior lounge space. The project also consists of streetscape improvements along the property frontage along South Dixie Highway and to the adjacent city-owned lot. The sidewalk along South Dixie Highway will be redeveloped to construct a new six-foot-wide sidewalk with street trees, which include 12 new bridal veil trees. The adjacent city-owned lot will be redeveloped through a revocable license and perpetual maintenance agreement in connection to this IDA. The city-owned lot will be redeveloped to provide a new meandering path that varies in width from 6 feet, 6 inches to 8 feet with street trees. There are other shade trees, palms, ground cover, and seating areas proposed that are incorporated into the pathway, which will create a more pedestrian-friendly environment as the street trees and shade trees installed will provide comfort and shade to pedestrians. Above is a rendering depicting how the city-owned lot would look from the intersection of Southeast 3rd Street and South Dixie Highway. The DDI Development Order would require a total of 538 parking spaces, while the project is proposing 468 parking spaces. As such, a technical deviation has been requested with this application for the 70-space difference. The project includes a seven-level internal parking structure that includes one level below-grade parking. A roll-up gate is provided at the beginning of Level 2, which is operational after hours from 10 PM to 6 AM. There are 79 parking spaces provided prior to the roll-up gate, which includes spaces located at the basement level. This parking structure includes 109 compact parking spaces, 27 EV parking spaces, and 70 EV-ready parking spaces. The project is also required to provide 27 bicycle parking spaces. The project is providing two bike racks that can accommodate parking for eight bicycles within the courtyard along the western facade that fronts South Dixie Highway, and additionally, an approximately 599-square-foot bicycle room is proposed towards the southwest corner of the project, which can accommodate up to 91 bicycle parking spaces for the project and will include a bicycle repair station. The project requires 40% of open space or 29,736 square feet of open space. The product is providing 29,852 square feet of total open space, which includes areas open to the sky and covered open space. This includes areas under the covered logias that is setback from the public sidewalk. Shown are the northern and western elevations. The northern elevation faces towards Southeast 3rd Street, and the western elevation fronts South Dixie Highway. The project incorporates a contemporary application of Meisner design elements and utilizes a neutral color scheme with varied stucco and stone materials. A limestone veneer is applied at the base of the building and provides additional design emphasis within the pedestrian realm. It is utilized as part of the significant colonnade area that is incorporated along the western facade, which contributes to the pedestrian scale at the ground level. Shown here are the southern and eastern elevations. The southern elevation faces an adjacent property, and the eastern elevation fronts the alley to the east, where the vehicular access occurs. Along these facades is the proposed parking garage, which is integrated with the overall building design and is screened from adjacent rightsways by the residential units. Additionally, this project was designed pursuant to the interim design guidelines, or IDG, which provides for revised setbacks, building heights enassing, and articulation for portions of the building known as the Architectural Opportunities Zone. This allows for the ability to exceed the 100-foot height limitation that is otherwise applicable to non-IDG buildings in the downtown. The building meets the massing standards of the IDG as 6% of the 35% limitation of the AOZ is used. Therefore, the CRA board may grant the additional 40 feet for a total of 140 feet in height. The application also includes the abandonment of two easements. The first easement abandonment is for an existing 12-foot-wide utility easement highlighted in blue above. The 12-foot-wide utility easement contains infrastructure for an 8-inch and 6-inch watermain, a new loop system that will be established in the alleyway during the public works review process. The second easement abandonment is for a portion of an existing 15-foot-wide easement for roadway purposes, highlighted in green above. There is currently no use for this 15-foot easement for roadway purposes due to its location within the site. As such, the easement is proposed to be abandoned. During the analysis of this application, staff found that the proposed project complies with the DDI Development Order, including the IDG, that the proposed multifamily residential use is consistent and compatible with the adjacent land uses. The proposed project will transfer institutional peak-hour traffic generating OE from downtown SubArea A and B. The project will convert the institutional peak-hour traffic generating to residential units of OE development. The project will construct a new sidewalk along South Dixie Highway and install landscaping with street trees, and a new sidewalk along Southeast 3rd Street in a city-owned lot and install landscaping with street trees, and staff supports the abandonment of the existing 12-foot-wide utility easement and the abandonment of a portion of a 15-foot-wide utility easement. The project was heard at the July 1st, 2025, CAB meeting, and was recommended approval in a vote of five to zero, and the project was heard at the June 26, 2025 Planning and Zoning Board meeting, and was recommended approval in a vote of five to zero. The CAB Planning and Zoning Board and Development Services Department recommends approval of the individual development approval application. The project complies with Ordinance 4035 and the IDG, and the city's urban design consultant reviewed the product and found it to be consistent with Ordinance Number 4035, and it's a penalty. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions? Mr. Thompson.
No questions at this moment, anyway.
Thank you very much. Ms. Nocles?
No questions right now.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Drucker, any questions?
No questions.
Thank you very much. Just one question that I have. What was staff's basis again? If you could refresh my recollection for the technical deviation on parking.
Are you asking for why the reduction?
Yes.
Let me check the staff report.
I could jump in. Brian, the Chad Development Services Director. So the applicant submitted an analysis that demonstrated that the rates they're proposing were reasonable, and they basically used how many bedrooms the various units were going to have, and essentially, the ITE rate, the Institute for Transportation Engineers, I believe is what it stands for, recommends a rate for a downtown urban setting of 0.75 parking spaces per unit. In this case, I don't make sure I get the numbers right, but essentially, what they're proposing is for the studio units, one space per unit, for the one-bedrooms, 1.25 spaces per unit, and for the two-plus bedrooms, 1.75 spaces, which is the code rate.
Right.
So on that basis, because of the different mix of bedroom types, we felt it was reasonable and recommended approval.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chad. Appreciate it. With no further questions from my commissioners, we'll ask the petitioner to please come up. Please state your name and address for the record. You have up to 20 minutes. Hopefully, you will not need to use them all. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Ellie Zacharitis, 14 Southeast 4th Street. Thank you, Jacob, for your very thorough presentation. I will be as brief as possible. Before I begin, I'm just going to give a little preamble. I think you all know how near and dear the downtown is to me. It truly has my heart. So any project that hits my desk, first and foremost, the building needs to be absolutely beautiful. That goes without saying. But equally important is the pedestrian realm and making sure that the pedestrian is at the forefront. And third, and finally, when possible, when feasible, what do great cities have in common? They all have pocket parks. So when feasible, we should be, in my humble opinion, incorporating pocket parks where possible. I submit to you that we've checked all three boxes, and I am very proud to present this application today on behalf of both Mill Creek and Group P6. So here's the parcel. Jacob already discussed that. This is the existing office building. We have two tenants of the office building here today. Both Tyree Boykin and Derek Vanderplug have their offices in this building. So we are proposing 306 units within an IDG 12-story building. As Jacob noted, the parking garage is seven stories, with the first floor being submerged, so it's six stories above grade. The parking garage is wrapped both on the west and the north with residential units, and on the east and the south, they are screened in accordance with CAB criteria. We have a mix of units, as Jacob noted, and more importantly, we're hoping to have equally a mix of individuals, whether it's families or young professionals, couples, haven't started a family yet, things of that nature. We're hoping to have that type of mix within the building itself. Okay, so let's talk a little bit about the IDG. As you know, Ordinance 4035 requires only a six-foot front setback at 100 feet, nine stories. While the IDG allows you to go taller, it's the same jar of peanut butter. You're just pulling it and pushing it in different directions. You're just pulling it and pushing it in different directions. But the benefit of the IDG is the pedestrian realm. So, in lieu of that six-foot front setback, you're now required 26 feet. As it sits today, there is one ingress/egress point, which is almost center in the middle of the development on Dixie Highway. To me, again, putting the pedestrian first and foremost, and putting the vehicle far second, I don't want to just create a 26-foot, beautiful pedestrian corridor that's interrupted frequently and often by a vehicle. So, we have pushed all egress and ingress to the rear, and we are utilizing that alley. As Jacob noted, from 5th to about 3/4 of the way through our property, the alley continues, but then it stops. So, we are improving the alley all the way from 3rd to 5th to ensure that there's circulation throughout. In addition, pushing all the traffic to the rear allowed us to move the sidewalk into our property. Currently, as I'm sure you are all aware, the sidewalk really sits on Dixie Highway. There is no barrier between the moving vehicle and the pedestrian, and there's certainly no shade. So, we have been able to push that sidewalk in and provide shade trees on both sides of that sidewalk. As proposed, we provided a six-foot sidewalk along Dixie Highway. We have been asked to increase that to eight feet. We have no issues with that. We can do that during building permits. So, Mr. Shuffle, by the way, it's nice to see you. If we could amend that condition of approval to require an eight-foot sidewalk along Dixie Highway, that would be fantastic. Okay, again, harping on the pedestrian. Not only are we providing 26 feet to our most western point, which is right here, but we actually have 80-foot setback to here. In addition to the 26 or up to 80-foot setback, we wanted to make sure that that front was very vibrant. So, we have Zen Gardens, we have putt-putt golfs, we have sitting areas, we have green walls, we have a lot of activity going on on our property, on Dixie Highway, even before you get to the building. Once we're in the building, we wanted to ensure that there are lights on the street. We want to make sure that it's not just pedestrian-friendly, but pedestrian-inviting. So, we have all uses that will have lights on 24/7. So, we have our lobby, our clubhouse, our fitness center. Things of that nature are all on the ground floor, all facing Dixie. This is just a pretty colored landscape plan. This is our landscape plan on the seventh floor. This is where you will find our pool amenity deck, which sits on top of that parking garage. We have met or exceeded open space. I just want to make a note, this does not include the park, which I will get into in the next slide, but we did not use the park for any density, intensity, or anything other than we just want to beautify it. Okay, so, let's get into the park. There is this parcel of property that sits just north of us. It's not an eyesore. It's well-maintained. It's grass. It has a couple of trees. It's just not usable. So, what we're proffering is, through a license agreement, if it is the will of council, through a license agreement, the ability to improve it as a public park and maintain it in perpetuity as a public park. And that onus and payment would all be, obviously, on the applicant. The park, the numbers that we've gotten thus far is approximately $300,000 just for the improvement. And then, obviously, there is a maintenance obligation every year to make sure that that's improved. This mahogany tree is onsite that we've relocated. We have very vast, wide, meandering sidewalks. We have 18-foot cement-tall seating walls and the like. Okay, we have, the entire application is a very clean application. There's only one ask, and that is for a reduction in parking. Brandon went into much detail on that, so I thank you, Brandon. I will say that Mill Creek is the second-largest multifamily developer in all of the United States of America. They clearly know what parking is going to be demanded or required based on their developments after thousands and thousands and thousands of units that they've developed. We also have as their partner Group P6, who is not foreign to Boca Raton and has done excellent work here in our city. So, I also pull, just out of curiosity, at strategic planning, the one takeaway I received from strategic planning from the five of you unanimously was that our downtown parking code is overburdened some and needs to be reevaluated, and direction was given to staff to do so, and I believe they have started working on that. But I did want to pull, just for your reference and your consideration, what the parking requirement is for the downtown in West Palm Beach. They have a minimum parking requirement and a maximum. Their minimum is one space per unit, and an additional one for every 20 units for guest parking. So, if we were building in West Palm, our proposed development would require 322 parking spaces. We are providing 464, which is, I understand, less than your current code, be it archaic, but significantly more than what downtown West Palm has or requires. Staff has reviewed and recommends approval of our technical deviation for the reduction of parking. This is a rendering of the park. You can see the 18-inch seating walls that go around the trees, the meandering sidewalk and the like. This is what you would see. This is on the north side, over here. This is the public park. This rendering is from Dixie Highway. And this is an aerial view. I apologize, I was asked to put in the residences, which will come in right behind us. Unfortunately, our renderer did not have time to do that, but that is already approved. I understand they're in for an amendment, but the structure of the building will remain pretty much the same. And also, we have, if this will go on, where am I here? We have the Roll-Up Palm Place Hotel, which has also been already approved and is in for an amendment. And staff has reviewed and recommends approval, and the entire team is here to answer any questions you may have.
Very good. Thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions? We'll start on my right first with Mr. Singer.
Could you please go back to that last slide? That was really quick.
This one?
Yes, thank you. I just, it went by so quickly. I just wanted to look at it. Thank you.
And just for the record, this is quoted just from the staff report, directly from your staff report.
All right, thank you. A question for staff. Could we just talk about the transfer and conversion, please?
Yes. I'm sorry, what's the question?
Could you talk more about it? Because since this was initially prepared, I believe our computations may have changed somewhat.
Well, we have a lot of projects that are going after the same OE's that are being processed simultaneously, but we have evaluated what the difference, they basically have proceeded in a different order than was originally anticipated. So, we've evaluated that, and all of them are okay to proceed with some minor adjustments for some of the upcoming applications that we don't expect to be a major issue.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Ms. Knackless?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Ms. Zacharitis, and thank you for including the widening of the sidewalk to eight feet. There was a couple of other things that we had spoken about, the transportation contribution and park hours on the park. Have you talked to staff at all about those?
Yes, I apologize. I should have brought that up. As it relates to staff hours, while we are--
Park hours, correct.
Park hours. While we are paying to improve this and while we are paying to maintain it, this is very much city-owned property. So, whatever hours of utilization, I don't want to say aberration, utilization that the city would like to place on the park, we are 100% in support of those, whatever hours you so choose. As it relates to the circulator, we are huge supporters of the circulator. I use it very often. And while there is not a requirement in ordinance 4035 for contributions to the circulator, we are part of the community, we are part of the neighborhood, and we would like to contribute. I spent some time speaking with the Public Works Department, both Zach Beer and Naresch, and they provided me the formula that they've been requesting of applicants. I don't have the number right in front of me, but maybe you do, Ms. Knackless or Mr. Schad. It's just shy of $15,000 a year, which we absolutely proffer voluntarily.
Thank you very much. Mr. Shuffle, do you have to add that too? Do you have to amend the IDA to put that in there as well?
Mr. Chair.
The transit contribution is already a condition of the IDA.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you very much.
It's item 5L.
Thank you.
On page 10.
Thank you very much. Mr. Thompson?
No questions.
Thank you. Ms. Rucker?
And Mr. Brown, I'm sorry, the 5L, is that the contribution we proffered?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Rucker, do you have any questions?
No questions. Just more of a commentary. It is a very good project for the downtown. Obviously, everybody knows I like reduced parking, especially the way that Mr. Schad explained it. I absolutely love the bike facility that's going to accommodate more usage of, again, walkability and pedestrianism. So, it's just more of a feedback of how much I think this project would be a great fit in the downtown, based on everything that we've been discussing throughout, you know, the last few months.
Thank you, Ms. Rucker.
Thank you very much. And for myself, you know, I just had a question about the trees. I know a lot of the public has contacted me directly about some of the trees that need to be either transplanted or that will not make it or whatnot, and I know that there was some specific requirements of staff and proffered by the developer to really use more mature trees in the park rather than saplings and whatnot. Can you just explain a little bit about that process? You were, I know they were very in-depth with arborists and things of that nature. If you could explain a little bit of that.
Yes. And I have Mark Jacobsen here as well. Yes, with regard to the city-owned park, what we're proposing is the heights are more than double than what code requires at the time of installation. We really wanted to make sure that we had a lush canopy within that park. As it relates to the banyan trees, I'm kind of a tree hugger, so we tried, with 100% sincerity, we had an arborist come out to the site before we even submitted to the city of Boca. We tried to do everything humanly possible to ensure that we can relocate two specific banions. One of the banions, oops, sorry, one of the banions, the southern one, the arborist from the onset thought it wasn't healthy enough to survive a move, and so that was 86ed almost at the onset, but he did come on July 29th, 2024, again in July of this year. Now, as it relates to the most northern tree, which is the one we were sincerely hoping to save, the arborist originally felt that the tree wasn't in the best health, but potentially could be moved. So, we hired Tree Movers, which is the most reputable and largest tree-moving company. They came, and between the arborist and the tree movers have made the determination that in order to relocate this tree, A, it's not in very good health, and B, we would literally have to cut it up in sections and try to glue it back together. And both the arborist and the tree remover have determined that that's not feasible. But we tried, and as it relates to the most northern tree, the arborist actually came out three times. And again, the first time being prior to even submitting an application to the city of Boca Raton. We really did everything in our power to try to save at least one, and unfortunately, that's just not our reality.
Very well. And do you recall how many new trees are going to be planted approximately in the new city park?
I'll ask Mark to answer that question. I apologize.
And maybe on the street, too, right? Because the street doesn't have anything.
Yes, we have street trees going all along Dixie Highway, beautifully placed. Let me go to your landscape plan, Mark.
Hi, I'm Mark Jacobsen, 2300 Corporate Boulevard, northwest, Suite 214, Boca Raton. We have about a dozen trees, so we're relocating two native mahagonies, one in our courtyard that's on Dixie Highway, and then one at the corner, as you can see. The required tree in the city of Boca is 10 feet in height. I think we're planting oak trees at 18 to 20 feet, gumbo-lumbos at 20 to 22, so we're making significant increases in size of trees. We did attempt to try to get the arborist to see if we could relocate those trees, but the problem was we have to cut them up in little pieces. The biggest issue is that we don't know what we're going to pull out in terms of city utilities when the roots come out. I mean, those trees, as you know, are 20, 25 feet wide, multiple trunks. In order to take them out, you have to take the banions, the trunks that go to the ground, cut them, and then cut what they support. So, by the time the tree movers was explaining how they would do it, we would end up with a shell of a tree and wait until it grew back. Obviously, they're fast-growing, but we thought it wasn't a feasible solution. So, that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And it looks like, Mr. Richter, just on Dixie Highway, it looks like there's about 18 trees, and that's not, that's just along the sidewalk, not internal to our site as well.
And, thank you. And also, I know, yeah, the buffer, the fact that they're buffering, they're not directly on Dixie, which is where I believe the sidewalk is right now.
That's accurate.
Yeah. Thank you. That's very--
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, so now we'll continue with the public hearing, and we have several members who have given us cards. I've kind of given them a quick shuffle to make sure there's equal sides. First, we'll start with John Grimaldi, then Monica Rambo, then Ignacio Diaz. If you wish to speak? You could wave in support if you don't wish to speak.
I want to speak because I want to thank some people. So--
Please state your name and--
Yes. My name is Ignacio Diaz with Group P6. I live at 2401 Arica Palm Road, Boca Raton, Florida, 33432. I'm here tonight to speak in support of the Modera Downtown Boca Raton Project. First, I want to express my sincere appreciation to the city, the CRA, and the community for the opportunity to be here. I also want to extend my gratitude to many current owners of the arbor property who have worked with us with great patience and collaboration over time. Some of them are here, such as Derek Vanderpluug, Keith Becker, Ty Boykin, and many others. We're very grateful and proud to be able to co-develop and present this high-quality project alongside Mill Creek Residential Trust, a highly respected national multifamily developer headquartered right here in our city, in Boca Raton. It's the number one in the nation headquartered in our city of Boca Raton. We believe Modera Downtown will bring much-needed housing solutions for the current and the newly coming young professionals and families who want to build their lives in Boca Raton. I also want to take an important moment to thank the city staff. This is very important for the CRA members here. I have to say that the city has improved so much in their processes, their professionalism, their collaboration have been critical to moving this project forward, in particular to Brandon Schad and Jacob German. And I think, to me, over the past few years, it's become clear that Boca Raton, we can improve more, don't get me wrong, but it's become clear that Boca Raton is not only a great place to live, but also a great place to work with, and especially for those of us committed to bringing housing projects for our community and our residents. Thank you again for your time, consideration, and support.
Thank you very much. Ms. Rambo?
Good afternoon. Monique Rambo, 99th Southeast Meisner Boulevard.
Good morning.
I don't think I'm going to be very popular, but I'm opposing the Modera project, Modera Boca project, as it stands today, and I'd just like to say that I'm not against development and improvements specifically to that area, but I feel the project is too large, too high. I don't feel like it fits in Boca. It's not in Spanish Revival Meisner Boca style. The requirement of movement of office rights, and then the need to convert them into residential. I understand that the banyan trees have to be destroyed, but why can't we replace them with new banyan trees? There's no plan for any new banyan trees in the landscaping. There's no sidewalk added to the road behind the project in between the residences and Modera Boca, which-- in between the residences and Modera Boca, which does not make Boca more walkable. And I take issue with the, the 306 units, the estimated 718 people, the estimated 1,153 daily car trips, but in the analysis, they're only adding four students to schools, and the need for only one additional police officer. I feel like that just doesn't add up. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rambo. Mr. Boykin, and then Mr. Vanderpluug.
My name is Tyree Boykin. I live at 968 Walnut Terrace in Boca Raton, and I currently own an office space that is in the building that the Modera will replace. I'd like to talk in favor of this building for a couple of reasons. I haven't always been a fan until recently of building bigger buildings downtown, but I'll tell you why I am now. Driving over to see my sister in Lakeland, Florida, I had to go through Bartow. I was stunned at the traffic. And the next day, I had to take some people over to Tampa. It took me forever to get any place in Tampa. People are moving to South Florida. They're going to come to Boca Raton whether people like it or not. We can't take a standoffish attitude of, I've got mine, now you get yours. This, this has to be a planned growth. And I think this building does this. And I'm going to tell a short story I told before planning and zoning. True story, and I'm sorry to bore my friends to have to hear it again. But my office being on the second floor of one of these buildings, I had clients, I have an architectural practice there. I had clients that came down from the north. They got off the Spanish River, came over to Dixie and drove down. When they came in my office, the first thing they said was, "Ty, we..." It feels like they put you in the bad part of town. And it made me really angry. And I went home and told my wife about it, and she said, "You know, they were speaking from their heart, as egregious as it sounds." And so I began to step back and say, "You know something? Dixie Highway has been the forgotten family member of the downtown, and we've got to change that." And I think this building with this park and this landscaping is a great start to do that. We have the bright line, and for years, we've heard about the bright line and what it's going to mean to Boca Raton. Yet, we ask people to come up from Miami and Fort Lauderdale, and we bring them through the worst part of our city. And I don't think we should do that. I think we should focus on buildings like this that make downtown better. I think we got to, we've got to make every effort we can to improve Dixie Highway, at least between Camino Real and Glades Road, or even farther up. There's just too much at stake. I came here in 1987. My folks lived here. And my father was really proud when we went down into Broward to eat, and we came back Federal Highway. And he said, "You're going to notice a big difference. You, you tell me when you think we've gotten into Boca Raton." And you could tell immediately. But you can't make that differential statement if you come Dixie Highway. So for those reasons, I think this is an important building. I was, I bought my office in '07. I loved that place. I never thought I'd leave. But that building I'm in is tired, it's old, and it's time. And I'm not, and I'm not telling people from just a outside observer, I've lived there, I've gone back and forth to that office from my house in Camino Gardens every day, and I've noticed the downtown has gotten worse along Dixie. So I think this is a good start, and it's a good-looking building. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. Mr. Vanderpluug?
Good afternoon, y'all. I'm Derek Vanderpluug, and my current address is 400 South Dixie Highway in Boca Raton, Suite 220. And I'm, among other things, the vice president of It's a Condo Association. So there's 20-some-odd, 22, 24, whatever it is, different owners that are all 100% in favor, obviously, of it, and I'm speaking on their behalf as well as my own, given that I'm the largest single condominium owner owning a whole building. And I agree with Tyree, you know, in, been involved in the downtown Boca Raton since '83, when the first real study was done, and then all of the evolution of 4035 and the IDG and so forth. And in order to have it downtown, you need people that live there. It's not just office buildings, and it's not just restaurant and retail and so forth. You need rooftops, as they call them, or people who actually live and work in the downtown and access it and help it survive besides all the other visitors and so forth that come to our area. And, and I think Tyree is correct in the fact that you have to have vessels in order to put new people into that are moving here. And it's a little bit like, as long as people keep making people, and they keep moving to Florida, and still in the over 900 a day, you have to have these vessels to pour them into. Otherwise, you start eroding neighborhoods through rezonings and different things that we've seen into the cities to the south of us, and how that has transformed. And I think that this project is ultimately a very good project. It's diverse in its articulation and architecturally. And I think that this is one of the few buildings that I've not designed that I can actually speak on behalf of the quality of it and the people that are involved. Thank you.
Thanks very much. This is still a public hearing now. That's all the cards I have. Anyone else wishing to speak about this project who has been sworn in, you may come up at this time. Please help. Thank you.
My name is Rita Head, and I have to admit, this is the first time I've heard of the Boca Modera project.
Oh, thank you. And your address, please?
1280 Thatch Palm Drive, Boca Raton, Florida, 33432. I just have a couple of questions. Is this going to be apartments, or are they going to be condos?
Apartments.
Apartment.
Just state all your comments, and then we'll get to them after.
I'm sorry?
Just state all your, state all your comments.
I don't have any comments. I just have a couple of questions, because I don't know anything about the project.
Okay.
Okay? I wanted to ask that question. And then I also wanted to ask, what is the, going to be the charge for these apartments?
Okay. Thank you. I guess we'll have the developer come answer those.
So you don't know the answers to those questions?
We'll have the developer answer those.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Unjiin?
Jonathan Unjiin, 6501 Congress Avenue.
Mr. Unjiin, welcome.
Thank you. I know you all missed me for the last month or so. But first off, I just want to say congratulations to the developers, because obviously, they're going to get awarded today a pretty massive project. You know, 180 units an acre is the calculation. So on roads that already have a lot of traffic, if you egress out of, onto Dixie from there, Palmetto gets pretty backed up, the left-turn lane, all that traffic, it's, it's there. So we're adding a lot of units. And the conversions are always interesting to me, because it's based on a study, from what I understand, of sub-areas and traffic. And there's been a whole lot of development since that. So as now we're converting and adding more to a different area than wasn't intended in the original study, I always find that interesting. The Miskell Doctrine, a lot of people may not understand that, but the Miskell Doctrine, I think, was established with the emergency room down the street, which was based on variances. So we're asking for less parking. They asked for less parking at the emergency room. Can't you make the building smaller? And, you know, especially when it's one of the most densest properties, I think, in the city. So, and I just want to point out, 140 feet high, it may be 12 stories, but 140-ish feet, isn't that what was too high for you all when Mr. Ross came here for an office building? So, you know, it's just interesting to me, in the part of town that's got nobody ever here for a hearing pointing out anything. As a person who's put in a proposal for a Live Local Act that I was told I couldn't, as you're giving a gift here that's now almost double what I asked for in my Live Local Act that would have brought 40% affordable housing, it's just interesting to see what this city does. And the gifts that they hand out to people in the same concentrated part of town that has massive development after massive development. And the last point I want to make, I really like Mr. Boykin, great guy, but I remember the project that was Ms. Miskell's behind. And he wasn't for that, for the density. So when it's something that you own, you're for it, but when it's your neighbors and what it may impact, you're against it. So that's just what I'd like to kind of say. Like I said, I, I'm not against this development. I want to point that out. But you should maybe stop focusing about the downtown with this massive density on little roads that have terrible traffic, and look at the part of town that makes sense, that I think all of you are learning more and more, that we should do something, especially if you're about to buy a building next door. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? Going once, going twice. Now we'll give the petitioner an opportunity for rebuttal. I know, Ms. Akarides, there were some open questions as well.
Sure, I'll do my best. I hope I answer all of them. This is a rental project. We, as I noted in my presentation, there is very varying sizes, and we don't know exact numbers yet. We're still working through the process, although we are hoping to submit for permits this month, by the end of this month, which we're very excited about. But they're going to start in the low 2000s for the smaller units and go upwards from there. Mr. Unjiin, with regards to traffic, as you will all hear from me tomorrow night when I present, traffic has actually gone down in our city. When we first envisioned what downtown Boca was going to be when it grew up, it was envisioned as an office park. Adding residential in the amounts that we have has actually reduced the anticipated traffic by over 20% of what was expected in our downtown. What else did I forget? I think that might have been all the questions. Did I forget any?
I think so.
Okay.
Oh, and also, yes, if any participant wishes to cross-examine anyone else who provided testimony, please come forward. Seeing no one? Very good. I said if anyone wishes to cross-examine anyone who provided testimony, please come forward. No. That's not, that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about the-
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. So we'll close the public hearing, and we'll ask for a motion in a second to adopt DRI IDA number CRP 24-01. I guess as amended, Mr. Brown, to include the eight-foot sidewalk?
Yes, we-
Or do we need to amend it first?
I would make a motion, then a motion to amend the, to include the eight-foot sidewalk.
Very good. Do I hear a motion to amend to include the sidewalk?
I would like to make a motion to amend to include the eight-foot sidewalk.
Very good. Do I hear a second? I'll second it.
Second?
Mr. Chair, I think what Mr. Brown said, we needed a motion, then an amendment. We just skipped ahead to the amendment without the motion. So I think we need to take that back a step.
Oh, first we need the motion, okay.
Yeah, move to adopt, then move to amend.
Very well. First, we'll take a motion to move and adopt DRI number CRP 2401.
I'll move to adopt.
Very good.
Second.
Second that.
Mr. Chair, for clarity's sake, that would include staff's conditions?
That would include, including staff's conditions. Very good.
The amendment to propose to clarify the eight-foot sidewalk is to change it to eight feet in the title, which is on line 15, and to change page eight, subsection five, I, Roman 1, to eight feet. So six feet.
Very good.
And that takes care of it.
And now we'll entertain that motion.
That would, yes.
So move to amend.
Second.
Second, okay. So first, do we want to have a discussion on that, or just let's approve the amendment first, and then we can still have discussion on the final amendment, correct? Okay, all, do we need a roll call on the amendment there? No?
I think you could do it by voice.
Voice. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No, very well. So now we'll proceed to the, to the main motion, and we're open for discussion. Commissioners, any discussion on this issue?
Mr. Chair, a question for staff. The alleyway, the, where the vehicles access, we've analyzed that and don't believe we need any traffic signal devices for the ingress-egress there on to either of the east-west streets, correct?
I believe the traffic engineer is going to come up and-
Thank you.
-make a comment. Very good.
Good afternoon, Narish Majurpo, City Traffic Engineer. As part of the site-specific traffic study, the alleyway intersections, and also the unsignaled intersection at Dixie and Thor, they have been analyzed, and the volumes, based on the projected volumes, they do not appear to be needing a traffic signal.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Any other comments on this issue? Ms. Rucker, any, any further comments?
No, none.
No, thank you. Well, just, listen, my only comment here is I think the developer has worked with the community, with the area, creating, proffering a pocket park here that will finally utilize something. Creating street trees, a buffered sidewalk that's wide enough to be used is going to create a more safe pedestrian experience. And that's very, very important. Of course, you know, between meetings, we always hear of these bicycle deaths that's going on. So the more that we could do when we're doing new projects to include this, I'm in favor of that. I'm in favor of the mixture of uses. And also, as we saw, you know, I'm more in favor of parking maximums. I don't think people are moving downtown to bring three cars each. And I appreciate staff really looking into that issue, as we saw what other cities are doing. So for, for many, many reasons, I'm in favor. I think this will add to the mixed-use, to the mixed-use, you know, feel of downtown. It's very, very important to our future, and the tax base as well. So with that being said, we'll have Ms. Shuffel do the roll call.
This is on CRP 2401 as amended. Singer?
Yes.
Drucker?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Naklos?
Yes.
Wigder?
Yes.
Motion passes, five votes to zero.
Very good. Okay. Well, thanks very much, everyone. Now we'll move to public requests. The floor will be open to public requests for just the downtown. Anyone wishing to speak about the downtown on any matter will be able to come up to the lectern and have three minutes. Sir, please.
Tyree Boykin, 968 Walnut Terrace, Boca Raton.
Thank you.
Just wanted to mention how passionate I've become about this Dixie Highway issue. I would reach out to you as the board members, some as council members, to put together maybe even a committee to study how we do that. A lot of money has been spent on landscaping, and that's all very nice on the, between, on, on the east side of Dixie Highway, between the road and between the railroad track. But I think we need to do more of how we, how we hide some of the industrial areas. There's nothing wrong with industrial areas. I'm all for them. But sometimes they like to, to have a different architectural aesthetic than the rest of the city. And I would appreciate it if we could put some time in on how, how we can make that better, so when people ride the bright line in here, that we become one of those places they want to stop and spend the weekend, and spend time in the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's still public requests for the CRA. Anyone wishing to speak? This is anything in the CRA. There will be a workshop after this that will have a specific, that title. Very good. Seeing no one, we'll close the time for public requests. Sure.
Dear Mayor Singer, first of all, my name is Vic Rose at 285 Northwest Ninth Street, Boca Raton.
Thank you.
Dear Mayor Singer, City Councilmember, City Staff, my first address is to save that Boca website that you may have all seen. I strongly urge the city to go through this document point by point tomorrow at city council meeting, demonstrating all the attendees and online viewers, how extremely misleading and in most cases totally false. For example, claims there's no studies that were done, seemingly forgetting about the $3 million CBRE study that covers many of these areas. While residents have the rights to oppose these projects, it doesn't grant them the right to come up with their own facts. The city must seriously educate the community on what's true and what is false. Now, this misinformation to spread only creates unnecessary opposition. The people put out misleading documents like are the same people who don't like hamburgers, fries, and milkshakes. They will never be happy with this project. Like I said earlier, I have no issues with those against the project, but they need to use real facts, not make up statements that are misleading or false to create opposition to this project. My second point is delay in making decisions on this project. My second point is delay in making decisions on this project only allows misleading opposition to grow. This project was awarded to Terriff Frisbee in January 28th. The community knows no more today than they did back then. It's time for you to start voting on components of this plan so we can move forward and satisfy the parties who spent months attending these meetings, supporting this project, only to hear talk and no action. There's no reason you cannot vote on the lowest hanging fruit of this project tomorrow, the tennis center. You must really love seeing Judy at these meetings because you've done nothing to resolve the issue, preventing us from focusing on City Hall, Fire Department, and Community Center. Boca Raton is now the home of many of the world's top tennis players, Tommy Paul, Coco Golf, Chris Evert. The tennis center was opened in 63, that's 62 years ago. It has 10 courts and it should keep its 10 courts. As more people move to Boca, we need to maintain these 10 courts for the downtown area. While this won't happen probably at the government campus, it can happen at Meadows Park, just a mile and a half away. You have two hard courts there, you just need to add eight new courts, build an improved clubhouse. This will make most of the tennis community very happy. And if done correctly, I can see where some of these top pros would use this place for, this location for practice and charity events. Furthermore, any tennis facilities at the government campus, it would just require sharing bathrooms and other sports, whereas the tennis community will want their own office locker room spaces they've had for 62 years. Timing is everything. Approve the 10 courts at Meadows Park tomorrow at City Council. Start seeking bids for contractors. Get this new facility built before downtown courts need to be demolished. By the time the courts are taken down, players will always be enjoying this superior new facility, just seven minutes away, to ensure smooth transition with minimal backlash because the community will be too excited about what they've gained versus what they've lost.
Thank you.
This should be an easy decision. The city's already investing in a new skate park, ball fields elsewhere, so why don't you do the same for tennis? While I personally prefer a proper tennis center, what was proposed for that location is, is only going to be a Band-Aid for this location. Not replacing the 10 courts for a 62-year-old center makes no sense.
Mr. Rose, can you please...
Let's do it right. Boca Raton, there's nothing less, as the saying goes, if you're going to do something, do it right or not at all. Finally, regarding the skate park, I introduce you to a company that worked with Tony Hawk and built some of the top skate parks in the U.S.
Please conclude.
Huh?
Please conclude your comments. You've gone over the time. There'll be another meeting after...
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I had 44 seconds left.
You're over by 44.
If anyone has part of the skate park, I'll be glad to share my information.
There's another meeting after this and you can come back then as well.
Okay, no problem.
Appreciate you. Thank you. Public requests, thank you.
John Pearlman, four-ninety-eight Northeast Eighth Street. I wasn't going to speak today, but I'm the organizer of the Save Boca movement that's flowing through rapidly Boca Raton at this very moment. I've been on the streets of Boca, collecting signatures for the movement, by the way, which is aimed at the protection of public lands for all of the citizens of Boca. And it says that land greater than half an acre can't be alienated from the public, sold, or leased without a public vote. Because right now, the public doesn't have protection over their public land and that's what this initiative petition seeks to change. I'd like to just respond to this gentleman. He's, he's obviously been to the website and has said what we've had inaccurate statements on there and he referenced some of the failures of Boca Raton to abide by various laws in place that are required for this city to move forward with a project that they, you know, that they call right now the government redevelopment campus. And he said they were false and they're not false. Anybody who's listening to this should go to the statutes on P3s, which the government campus development project is based on. If you read through the statutes, there's two very important things that are required by the statute before a project can be approved, discussed, moved forward with, and contemplated. And that's an independent cost-effectiveness analysis and an independent public benefit analysis. Neither the independent cost-effectiveness analysis nor the independent public benefit analysis have been done as required by the Florida statutes on public-private partnerships. In addition, the, according to the Boca law and the Boca code, when you sell public land, and this, there's been many discussions about that condos are likely going to be part of this development plan, which is, this is public land and condos are going to be sold, so the sale of public land. There has to be an appraisal of the land prior to transferring the land, selling it. That hasn't been done. Also, there has to be an ordinance that shows the terms and conditions of the sale and the, it has to show the terms and conditions of the sale and as well as the amount of consideration. That ordinance has to be voted on and those, that information has to be presented. That also hasn't been done. And these are important laws and they're in place for a reason. And that's all on the site. You should go to saveboca.org and join the movement that's sweeping Boca at this very moment to sign and support this incredible initiative petition that will change the public's ability to protect our land now for our children and for all future generations of Boca Raton. Thank you very much.
Mr. Pearlman, thank you very much. Uh... Ms. Morrow, yes, please.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Judy Morrow. I live at thirteen-oh-five Northeast Fifth Avenue.
Ms. Morrow, good afternoon.
The skirt that I'm wearing today is the skirt for the Boca Raton Tennis Center B two...
Please come to the microphone, although we do see the skirt.
Sorry, sorry.
Let the record reflect, she is wearing a skirt.
Okay, sorry, sorry. Okay. Boca Raton Tennis Center at two-seven-one Northwest Boca Raton Boulevard. Our team has already lost three people because they're worried about us having courts. We have picked out a skirt for our next season, starting this year in October, or whenever, depending on how many teams. The point is that we do not have on the city website a guarantee or in writing that the Boca Raton Tennis Center will be moved to Meadows Park Pool, Meadows Park and constructed there. And we'd like to know the estimate of how much it's going to cost. There's a range, the low, the high. If the city's going to pay for this, the city's going to have to pay for this because the developer's not going to pay for it in Meadows Park. We want to know that it's going to be started before they knock down our tennis courts. It doesn't make sense, you know, not to have a place to live, work, play, walkable, bicycle, all that. And also, for your information, because you're worried about the future and everything, the USTA, United States Tennis Association, in 2024 had 25.7 million people that play tennis. They project in the year 2035, we will have 35 million tennis players. So you're making all these plans for more apartments and everything, but you have to also include tennis. Tennis is growing. Tennis is very popular. So you've done a great job of helping pickleball and padel, but tennis, we are the originals. We've lived here the longest that we've been playing. We're dedicated. We live 9.7 years longer, et cetera, et cetera. But talking about projection, listening to everybody else, what do you, Bright Line net loss is $549 million. They lost $153 million in 2024. So if you're counting on them, they look like they're in trouble, but that's just my opinion. They're 30% below their projection and they might have a hard time staying in business. The other thing is, the city has a triple-A rating.
Ms. Morrow, can you please conclude?
And so, plus, we have $550,000 that was never used on Boca Raton Tennis Center. So please break ground at Meadows Park before the end of the year.
Thank you.
And I'm, I'm pretty good today. I didn't go over three minutes.
Thanks, Ms. Morrow. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Unjiyan.
Jonathan Unjiyan, sixty-five oh one Congress Avenue. One thing I want to point out to Ms. Morrow's point, I don't think I've ever discussed it up here, but you may not know, I, my family moved to Boca because of tennis. I was top five in the country in juniors, I was on the national team. And I don't pick up a racket anymore and probably won't, but just something to keep in mind. And maybe you wish you didn't have tennis because maybe I wouldn't be here being a pain in your butt, but anyway. But what I wanted to discuss was the other component, which is where your city hall will be. So on the consent agenda for tomorrow, I saw a pretty large purchase of an office building directly behind here, which I insinuated in my last comment. However, that property is multiple buildings. The parcel, so is it a unity title? Where does the city's property sit? How much of the parking lot is the city's when there's two office buildings that are on that parcel? Additionally, based off of that, therefore, is the purchase price that the city's making, which I believe the nicer of the two buildings went for about $14 million, the city's now buying a building for almost $18 million. So again, I think it's really important to understand what is the city's property? Because it's not in the consent agendas packet, supplement packet. And while you're going to be my new neighbor times two with this building, you know, maybe it's time to look at, you know, this part of town that nobody seems to care about with infrastructure that's great, with roadways that are great, instead of continuing to shove development in the proverbial downtown, and look at what this city's future should be, the tax base should be. Because it is in your packet, the discussion on buying that building and how this area is advantageous. I fought for so long for the zoning, as you all are aware, and the reality is those zoning restrictions that impacted my building for so long are now gone, but they were gentrification methods for the developers around town to buy our properties for under value that the current property owners don't get fair value. And now I fear that this is what this city's doing, is, again, they've kept the restrictions at 20 to 25 units an acre while you approve projects in the downtown for 180 units an acre, which allows you to buy a building next door for under value, potentially, if they did have better development rights. So again, I hate to think that the restrictions that impact this part of town are gentrification methods that allow large developers or the city to buy up property, but something you all should think about...
Thank you, Mr. Unjiyan.
Very soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Unjiyan. Final comments for the CRA, this is for the CRA Downtown, yes? Sure, please.
Again, my name is Rita Head. I'm at twelve-eighty Thatch Palm Drive, Boca Raton, three-three-four-three-two.
Thank you.
I've lived here in South Florida since 1973. Forty-six years of though I've spent in Boca. I'm a concerned citizen, wanting to find out all I can about the Commons or Centennial Park or whichever it's called. I've seen it called both, okay? I have some questions I'd like to ask in order to make an informed decision. All I want is, all these citizens want, is transparency. You have spent $375,000, $375,000 already in a deposit. I don't know what that was paid for. Could you answer that question? Anybody?
We'll take down all your comments and then we'll reflect them after. That's how it works.
Well, you're going to have a lot of them. I also haven't been able to find any feasibility studies, either by you, the council, or by the developer. I also doubt that people will live there and work there, vice versa. Who pays for the infrastructure, the city buildings and the development buildings? Traffic will certainly be an issue. Living and working just doesn't work in Boca Raton like it does in a big city. All the pictures on your website for this project show big city pictures, you know, New York, Philadelphia, Cayman Islands, every place that isn't the same as Boca Raton. And I don't believe you're considering that. I mean, we already have 12 million square feet of available office space. We have 376,895 square feet in retail available. We have 1,146 condos and apartments available for sale, 165,000 square feet of apartment rentals, 350,000 square feet of hotels, not including the new Royal Palm Plaza Hotel downtown, not including this new Padera project that I didn't even know about. I can't believe it hasn't been advertised by you, the city council, okay? What is the square footage and dollar amounts of permits in the city now, over and above what I've just stated? Federal highway is going down to two lanes, it's already two lanes from Camino to Palmetto, but from Palmetto to Twentieth Street and Fifth Avenue, it's going down to two lanes because the county wants to have a bike lane from Camino to Fifth Avenue and expand the sidewalks. But what about the people driving?
Thank you.
Do you live in Boca? Do you live in, does any of you live in downtown Boca?
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Your time has expired.
You do? Okay, well, I have someone else to finish reading this, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Diane Glennie. I live at three-zero-one Southeast Spanish Trail, right here in Boca. Number four on Rita's list, let's see. When will we have information on the schedule of phases? Inclusion of what buildings cost to the city, start and completion dates? Number five. Why was $4.2 million allocated for moving historical buildings if you did not already know the outcome of the proposal prior to the final contract? City's financial obligation before developer construction starts? Number seven. What are the city's obligations for each phase? What would be the city's maximum risk if all phases are not built? How much money does the city receive upon completion of each phase and what is the schedule? When will the project be paid off? Memorial Park was dedicated to the veterans and can you legally negotiate with an outside entity under these circumstances? If all four phases are not completed, what, what would be Plan B for the acreage? One more thing. I understand the developer will underwrite the mayor's ball? Is that true? And lastly, please don't treat your citizens like houseplants. Give citizens a chance. Without information, we cannot make a good decision and hurrying this project seems to be a lack of consideration. And then, if I, if I may, I was just reading Mrs. Head's comments for her. I have 42 seconds. I would just like to, I would just like to say that I've been here since nineteen, my husband and I and children were born here, since 1987, and we really, really miss having a local newspaper. And I think that that is why a lot of things have changed as far as not having a concerned and educated citizenry, because we don't really read what's going on and people don't really know what's going on. And I know you say we can go to this website and that website, but people just don't do that as a matter of course. So we really do, I just wonder if you have any ideas or suggestions? So, we really do, I just wonder if you have any ideas or suggestions on getting information such as this more available and out to the people? And then lastly, I'm really concerned about the fact that, I don't know who can afford to live here any longer. I'm worried about, you know, are we going to be able to have young people living in those buildings, et cetera?
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to speak? Thank you, Ms. Rambo.
I'd just like to make a, Monique Rambo, 99 Southeast Meisner. I'd just like to make a quick comment about the digital kiosks in the downtown. I think it's a lot of money, $394,000 for a purchase, $525,000, half a million dollars to lease for five kiosks in the downtown. That is basically information that you could get on your phone or on an app. There have been kiosks in Royal Palm for over a year now. I walk there at least twice a day, many days more than twice, and I have never once seen anybody on any of the kiosks. They're in multiple locations, never seen anybody. So, I'd just like to consider that there might be a better way to get information to residents rather than a static kiosk at different locations throughout the city for what I think is a lot of money. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak about the downtown? Everyone's had their chance. Okay, we will close the time for public requests. Mr. Brown, we're not going to be able to answer all of these questions in this, in this setting. Some of them will require probably a formal report after or from the developer. Likewise, there is a workshop meeting, right after this meeting, where this item of the government campus is specifically to be discussed, where there'll be reports from staff and CBRE, and another opportunity for public comment. So, with all those things being said, Mr. Brown, do you want to make some comments?
In order to provide an appropriate and detailed response to the number of questions that were asked, we're going to have to transcribe the questions.
Thank you.
And prepare an answer, and then we'll send it out to those who are here and present. We have their addresses, we'll be able to get them out to you.
Thank you. Let me just say, this downtown discussion, including the government campus, is one that we've been had, again, transgressing previous councils, but it's been going on for a very, very long time. And we're doing our due diligence, we're still in that phase. A lot of those questions, they are good questions, and they do have to be answered, and they will be answered, many, many of you all. There are things that are being looked at and that are being studied in many different facets, to do the best thing, to make the best informed decision for the city. And that's why there's a specific website that the staff created to put all that information, to put all that information out there. And there's still more that's going to be had. It's not instantaneous, it's a work in progress. There's a lot of reports, due diligence stuff related to utilities and things like that, that are going to be coming, and respect to the financials as well. So, all those, all those questions will have to be answered before we're moving forward on this. And so, there's, there's a lot, we're still in an early planning stage with, for a project of this, of this nature. But like I said, at every meeting, including every CRA meeting, and then the workshop meeting, and then the meeting tomorrow, there's more opportunities to, to talk about this as well. As Mr. Brown said, we will transcribe, because that's a lot of questions, that just can't be answered off the cuff here. You know, the staff will, will have to look at those, and then likewise, the developer will look at those as well, so we can get some meaningful answers, and those should be shared with the public as well. Commissioners, any other comments on this? Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Chair, if I may, thank you. First, thank you for coming, I'm actually delighted to see some of you, because you're helping us get accurate information out there. Ms. Head, first request to you, can you leave a copy of your questions or send them, so staff doesn't have to transcribe? On our city website, which unfortunately is not as pithy as some other ones, it's myboca.us, for close to a year now, we've had an overview of the project, all of the relevant documents, and a frequently asked questions section. We've been sending this out in monthly newsletters, special newsletters, had charrettes, we'll have more charrettes. I personally write a newsletter and have that information out there. So, a lot of the questions you've asked haven't been answered yet, because they're not answered yet, we're still in this phase. We're still working on tennis, and we understand the importance of that. You'd asked why certain things were moved, I can just answer some of them now. We'd long been planning to move the Children's Museum off the site regardless of this downtown project, so that, it's in the budget. Nothing is a done deal. We will still have, continue to have more than the two dozen meetings we've had, we're having another upcoming now, we're having another tomorrow night. So, that information will come out there. But please, I encourage you to get the facts, there is a petition out there circulating, which unfortunately, I think, would dramatically impact every nonprofit in the city, because you could no longer do a lease with a nonprofit without going back to the public. And that would, think of all the wonderful, I see some past organizational presidents who have leases of more than half an acre, whether it's the Museum of Art, the Junior League, Tri-County Animal Rescue, those leases would require a standalone election now, and that would be a problem. But be that as it may, if you've got concerns about the downtown, we want to hear them. We're still working and making this project better. Just a couple other notes, because they were all coming there. Affordable housing is an important concern of all of us, that's why the city council has approved more affordable housing units and attainable housing units, and why this plan brings it. This is an opportunity to bring that there, because we want to see all people living here. Someone asked a question about the mayor's ball. Please note, I have the, I'm honored to be mayor, but sometimes it creates confusion, because the Rotary Club founded that ball years ago, named it, as they have in other cities, has nothing to do with the mayor, I do not give consent to that name, it is just, it honors all the mayors of Boca Raton, it was done before I was mayor, so whoever's a sponsor, I'm not up on that, it's not something I'm involved with, it's not a city project, it is the Rotary Ball. If you want to contribute to the Rotary, they do so. But more importantly, please, get the facts, go to our website, please talk to your neighbors, please ask us questions. I see some of you for the first time and never received an email from any of you, I did receive yours, Ms. Head, the other day with questions, which I forwarded on, and I'm telling you now that we don't have all those answers, but whatever information we have, we're trying to put out there, and we'll ask that you do so too. And if you've got concerns, that's great, we want to hear them. We will not make every one of the 100,000 people in Boca Raton happy, but we're trying our best to create a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity that a lot of people like many components, and also recognize that we're going to save potentially tens and scores of millions of dollars by a public-private partnership that will give greater facilities to us that we need, like a desperately needed community center, and also other amenities, including increased recreation, that will create something that doesn't shut down Friday at 5:00. And please, and Ms. Head, you can't come back and forth, but we will have another meeting shortly, and if you want to come back there, or I can talk to you during the break, but I appreciate all of that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the time. Thank you. And let me just make one more comment, the, as the mayor said, you know, this is not the only interaction that is permitted, you know, you could come talk to us at any time, we're very accessible, my phone number is on the website, you could call me, you could text me, you could email me, I'd love to meet with people and have coffee, I'd love to walk the neighborhood with people, you know, it's what I try to do every weekend. And, and, you know, so we could have a meaningful conversation about this, because it's nearly impossible to have a meaningful conversation in three minutes. It's just, you know, to express your concerns, sure, but please call us, reach out, because we want to hear from you. And of course, we're trying to get all the information that we can before we make a decision. And it does, and you're not limited to three minutes, please, you know, the public shouldn't think that way, that, oh, we're just limited to these three minutes. You could just email us, you could email us anything you want, and we'll read it. Absolutely, you could call us, and we'll get back to you as soon as we, as soon as we can. So, we do appreciate all the comments, and we're trying to work for the best, you know, the best thing in the city. Anyone else? No, good? Nope, okay. So, with that being said, there are no resolutions and regular public hearings, there are no, there is no other business or settlements to consider, and now we'll go to the director's report.
Thank you, Chair. Ruby Riley, our downtown manager, is going to give us an update on the research we've been doing about the potential for digital kiosks as a wayfinding and information option in the downtown.
Thank you very much. Ms. Riley, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, Chair, and members of the board. For the record, I'm Ruby Riley, downtown manager. And as was stated, today is an update to follow up on the last digital kiosk presentation, which was presented to you all in February of this year, and we provided an option referred to as Ike Smart Cities, but their business model indicated that they had to use advertising, and the board was not in support of their proposal, and you all requested additional options. The consensus was for a smaller amount of kiosks to serve as a pilot program from one to five units and potential locations near transit. So, staff continued our discussions with Toshiba for enhanced digital kiosk options, and we feel we've obtained a program that is without advertising, and it may serve as branding and wayfinding opportunities throughout the downtown on a smaller scale. Toshiba Outdoor Solutions is an approved vendor, which will provide us quicker turnaround to program implementation, should the board decide that that is the direction you would like to go. So, preferred options that were discussed with Toshiba were no advertising, a pilot program for one to up to five kiosks, a turnkey operation, a shorter term, which is five years, and the maintenance and warranty would cover the entire term of the five-year purchase and/or lease. And obviously, we could have a purchase or lease option as well. Some of the kiosk features are that they would be operational 24/7 with temperatures up to 140 degrees, graffiti-resistant screens, use of cellular data, the kiosk sizes would be seven by three by one and a half feet, and allow for custom design and content development with an interactive point of interest map, as well as interactive landing pages, integration with Civic Plus, which is the city's website vendor, provide for emergency alert notifications, as well as delivery and installation from permitting to trenching if need be, wiring, et cetera, to complete installation. With regards to the full-service content development, we provide integration with the downtown Boca website, and this is a sample landing page that shows use of downtown Boca website, and also provides for use of QR codes for ease of access on phones. With regards to service and maintenance, the initial five years would be covered, and that would include a daily assessment, which would be a health check, surface cleaning, and then the service plan would include all troubleshooting with regards to remote access, if it can be fixed so, and if not, an onsite technician as needed. Repairs and replacement would be included due to faulty equipment, and an option to renew the maintenance after the initial term. With regards to the lease provisions, as stated, it would be a five-year term, and we would have monthly lease payments, and we would own the kiosks at the end of the term, the five years. And again, we would have an option to renew the maintenance after the initial five-year term. Also included on this slide is the pricing for the lease, as well as the purchase, and it goes with a higher cost for the initial kiosk, and then a lower cost for each additional kiosk, up to four. For the lease, it would be a total of $525,394 for a total of five, and on the purchase, it would be $394,870 for a total of five. As indicated in our staff memo, we were going to come to you with some locations, what you asked us for in February were some locations near transit. So, to the north, let's see if I can, there we go, this area here would be the Brightline Station. Then to the north, we followed Federal Highway down south for the transit stop, so you've got one at the north, which would be the museum and Meisner Park. Then as you travel south along Palmetto, just east of the arches on First Ave, and then this location is near the Trader Joe's, and the one for the south is near the Camino Real Publix. So, today, we are hoping to obtain board consensus, if the board is amenable to choosing Toshiba as the vendor, the number of kiosks you are looking for, as well as the potential locations of the kiosks. So, at this point, Mr. Chairman, I would like to open it up for discussion or questions from the board to hopefully obtain that consensus before we move forward on this. Thank you.
Sure, thank you very much. Before we open it up, just to refresh my recollection, the last time we talked about this, there was a revenue generating option, which were, obviously, there was some sort of advertising component to it, where, where if local businesses and whatnot participated in it, instead of us paying for these kiosks, it would be revenue generating to the city for them, of course, that did not reach consensus, but that was, in fact, the original plan. Right?
That is correct, the advertising would generate the revenue, but I would like to state that it was related to a national advertising brand, and they did not include advertising for local businesses. So, it would be their national brand and part of their business model, nothing local.
Local businesses would have to advertise with the national company.
Correct.
Very good, okay. So, with that clarification, commissioners, any comments on this item?
Question?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Riley, would you say over the last years, we've had more concerns where people were expressing, we've had more people expressing concerns about the amount of available space in the sidewalks, and the width of the sidewalks, and blockages there, or more people calling for digital kiosks?
I will answer that question this way, by stating that our downtown plan does include for improvements with regards to enhanced walkability and pedestrianism throughout downtown, and we are still striving to obtain that.
Right, but which of the, if you answer it the way I asked it, please, which, which one have you heard more of?
We have not had any inquiries with regards to digital kiosks.
But we've had more about the space and the sidewalks.
And, and the opportunity for pedestrianism within the downtown, yes.
Very well. Is there any feature in these kiosks that is remarkably different than what people get on a smartphone in terms of neighboring businesses and links to websites through the maps or Google apps?
No, it is comparable to what we have online or availability on a phone.
All right. I may have telegraphed my concerns here. Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll wait until there's more questions.
Anything else, Ms. Knuckles?
Mr. Wiger?
Oh, Ms. Drucker, please, thank you.
Yes, thank you. So, I just wanted to stand here a little bit longer, and I'm going to drop off this call, but West Palm Beach has put in their pilot with Ike City about a month ago, I think I might have sent an article to, to many of you. Again, here we are, Boca, Mr. Singer, you want to bring all these businesses and all these people from New York, I've been seeing from my travels. We need to stay up to date with the technology, what's happening in all the big cities, and all the big cities have these kiosks to help with tourism, and not necessarily with someone like me that, that has the phone. Sometimes the phones don't work, sometimes people run out of battery, but in major cities, even Miami, Lauderdale, obviously, West Palm just started theirs, we're always kind of trailing behind them, and maybe, maybe that sometimes we lose some of that business, I feel, headquarters that don't go to Boca and end up in West Palm, and I've had conversations with different people lately, and it's kind of like, a lot of the things that we're always trying to keep up with. So, that's why, when I saw this out a year and a half ago, maybe almost, yeah, it's been about 18 months, that's why I think I had discussed this during the council meeting, and I like the model of Ike, because it did have revenue generating methods, and I don't remember that we specifically said that we did not want a revenue generating option or advertising. I can't recall that from the meeting, but we might have had consensus of that, I can, I can tell you that, that was not my consensus. But, in any event, a lot of, a lot of the cities are implementing these features around their transit mobility areas, as you increase more pedestrianism, more tourism, and more people that are coming into your city. So, that is why I had always been an advocate for it, but now the model that Ruby you've presented, it's a little bit different, because the cost is now more of a burden to the city. So, I'm a little bit confused with what the direction was last time, and what, you know, what, how we landed here. So, that's just food for thought.
Thank you, Ms. Drucker. Thank you, Ms. Knuckles.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a couple concerns too, and Mr. Singer pointed out some of the ones that I share with him, but also the five-year pilot. Five years just seems like a long term, is there any shorter term that they had? And if so, what is, or if not, what is a, is there a cancellation cause, a clause within the term, since I think maybe we're leaning towards the lease part of it?
The terms of the lease were for five years in order to provide the type of service that we were asking for, and the ability to have the varying numbers from one to five, and the cancellation is at the full term, so it is five years, you're locked in.
Okay. There was also a mention of the Royal Palm kiosk in There was also mention of the Royal Palm kiosk, and even though I know that's private, is there any data on how often? I've used them once when I've been in Royal Palm, but any data that you've had for people?
I do not have any data on that. We did evaluate what they were using, and it was essentially a screen, like a TV screen or a computer screen that had a frame around it. We actually went to the vendor that made those. So it wasn't practical for us because we were looking for something that would provide us with maintenance and upkeep and those kind of things.
Okay. And there is a kiosk at Bright Line. What, do you know what information that provides? Is it linked to the downtown Boca website at all, or does it give any information about downtown?
No, that would be completely private for Bright Line and their advertisers, and probably like Discover the Palm Beaches advertises on it for tourism and that kind of thing.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
I don't think I'm at this stage anyway, ready to move forward on this. I don't see it as a desperate need. I don't think, I have a concern, as I stated originally, with the concern that I had, which was kind of visual pollution, and you're giving up something in terms of the walkability potentially by having these things occupying, assuming they're in the sidewalks, occupying sidewalk square footage. So I've taken trips overseas in the United States recently where I've navigated parts of the urban area there, and it tends to be relatively easy to do when you have a cellphone. And it just doesn't strike me as something you need to have a standalone visual model like this to do so. I'm just, not to say that I'll always say no on this, I just, I'm not that, it doesn't strike me as a significant enough need to justify the cost that we're looking at here, so I'm not willing to move forward at this moment.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I've been thinking about this, and we have a lot of stuff happening downtown, where it would be nice if things were more cohesive. We do a lot of things, sometimes slipshod, where we try things out and it works, but what we're trying to do here is make a cohesive downtown, and you know, obviously, in terms of the digital kiosk, the idea is to project information that's not automatically, you know, geo-fenced into your cellphone. But to your point, and I do agree with the other commissioners, it is easy to use this device wherever, whatever city I was in overseas or whatnot, it is useful. Likewise, with the advents of AI and technology that I see that I'm using in my daily business, that people are using, that even the city's starting to use, I think there's going to be opportunities where we might not even need so much of a digital kiosk as we might need to update the software of our downtown website to make it more interactive, to make it more mobile-friendly, and that we might be able to integrate AI-based resolutions into our downtown.boca.org mobile website, so people could just go to the My Boca and then the My Boca Downtown app, and just use the app and do the things that we're talking about. And so I get it, we're not quite there. Also, as I said to Ms. Riley, we're at a point where, you know, we're at a point where we started talking about, you know, revenue generating to the city of whatever it was, $800,000 over some sort of number of years versus a negative, to Ms. Rambo's point, you know, negative 300-something thousand, you know, so it's a significant financial shift in a time where we're supposed to be really looking at being more efficient with the taxpayer dollars, and it's something that concerns me. So I could see that we could need to be a little bit more tailored, and we could come back and discuss this in the future. So I don't think it's ready to move ahead, and it doesn't look like there's a consensus for that at this time. The only thing I'll, the only thing I'll say is, you know, to Ms. Nocles's point about the Bright Line or Ms., you know, is that Bright Line has it, talking about the Palm Beaches, to put people on the train to take them out of Boca, so they could spend money in other places. So I don't know, just think about that a little bit. But I guess we'll have a little bit of time to think about that in the future. Mr. Brown, any comments?
Just to say, I'm understanding the consensus of the board to be that we will look at other ways of enhancing information availability to people who visit our downtown.
Sounds good. Okay.
And we could consider other options in the future as well.
Okay.
I will look into the Bright Line. I admit that when I take the Bright Line, I don't think I've noticed the kiosk because I'm focused on getting on the train, but go over there and take a look at it and see what actually information it does present. It is their kiosk, we can't dictate to them what it should present, but we can always suggest.
I appreciate it, thank you. Yeah, the one thing I do note when I see kiosks in the airports and whatnot, which I'm a lot at lately, but is they have chargers for the cellphone attached to the kiosk. So obviously, because if your phone doesn't work, then, you know, the kiosk can be that local power source, but we'll talk about that in the future. Okay. Anything else, Mr. Brown?
I have no further reports this afternoon.
Okay. Mr. Sheffel, anything on the attorney side?
Mr. Kayler?
Mr. Kayler, any report? Apparently not.
No report.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Commissioners, any report? Mr. Thompson?
No report, thank you.
No report, thank you.
Mr. Singer?
No report, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Drucker?
No report, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, folks, hang in there with me. I've got a couple of minutes to talk about, it's been a while since we've been here. Thank you very much. You know, a lot of our constituents talk about, you know, the research, and obviously, you know, I'm very research and data-driven and whatnot, looking at the history of the downtown. This is the original CRA boundary map, of course. It's on the downtown, the updated downtown plan, it's all on the website, you can go get there. It's been updated every time we pass an ordinance in the downtown, the downtown plan gets updated, right? It continues to involve, as we implement this, which started really, you know, 30-plus years ago. As we talked about in the last hearing, our downtown's basically loosely subdivided into sub-areas, and there's conversion, generally speaking, to areas to permit development to occur in areas that's favorable to the market, right? So we're not so specific, right? Zoning generally is not block-by-block specific, otherwise, nothing would happen. So the idea is to have this conversion, transference, you know, to be able to happen a little bit loosely organized, so that development can occur in market-favorable conditions. You can see that happening. It's happened today a little, there'll be discussion tomorrow about it as well. Our downtown projects, I'm not going through all these, our downtown projects, we update the projects that are important to the city. The tax increment financing in our CRA, basically, all this tax revenue helps pay for all of these infrastructure projects, okay? Walkability, hardscape, potentially parking, right? Traffic lighting, downtown decorative street, stuff like that. Palmetto Park Road, walkability improvements, we're always talking about this, drainage, of course, roadwalk and sidewalks, electrical upgrades, you see that happening now, Sanborn Square, Meisner Park improvements, okay, the amphitheater, parking analysis, our transit program, which we're working on with Connect, the Bright Line train station, East Platform, adjacent to the CRA, but it's important. These projects, these investments, the tax increment findings that we're using on this, it's basically to make our infrastructure better, to make people safer, to make less traffic, okay? Ms. Drucker was at the NACTO conference a couple of months ago, I guess, and there's a huge discussion there about intersections and what we could do to make intersections safer for people, okay? Downsizing intersections while creating spaces accessible to larger vehicles is critical to right sizing intersections for people. We're using our tax increment financing as we rebuild these streets to make it safer for people. This isn't, these are important investments. We can't just leave it the way it is. We can't afford to leave, just leave things the way it is. The projects, current, previous that the council identified, they need to be funded. They're funded from taxes, they're funded from fees, and in the CRA's case, they're funded mostly from tax increment financing. In SubArea A, as we know, and we've been talking a lot about, there's basically been no significant redevelopment to fund any of the tax increment for these localized But basically, what I'm seeing, what we're seeing over the last 35 years, and my research is kind of showing me, right, these patterns, we're kind of creating this misallocation of tax increment from all these other areas, all these other developments happening, to support the non-development areas. Or what we're really seeing here is that there's really been no significant redevelopment in SubArea A, other than the Bright Line station, until now, until this opportunity that's happening now. Of course, continued with the downtown projects that we have, East-West pedestrian connectivity, right? The Alta, and now with Jeff Speck is working on pedestrian connectivity in our downtown to make it more walkable. And you could see all these policies that it promotes, everything that's in our strategic plan, and of course, finally, the transit-oriented community, the redevelopment downtown. It basically hits every single one of the strategic initiatives that we, this council specifically chose to improve the city, pedestrianism, all those things. Completing our TOD is a critical part of our downtown plan, and it helps the city and the CRA create a responsible, balanced funding opportunity for this and other areas of the downtown and of our cities, okay? And that's why I was pleased when the developer came to show how it's connected. We have a pedestrian bridge opportunity here to do some east-west connection. There's some real, really good opportunities here for infrastructure, but we're also creating tax base, because remember, what happens here, in about 15 years, the CRA will disappear pursuant to its terms, pursuant to the statute. When that happens, the city's tax base is going to have to pick up the slack. So if we do nothing, that is a tremendous burden to you, it's to the taxpayers. We have to start making those investments right now in tax base and in infrastructure now. We've got to complete, a lot of infrastructure work on SubArea A, as we've said, nothing's been done there. Unfortunately, Ms. Rambo, to your point, a lot of stuff has not happened in 60 years. None of the pipes, none of the streets, nothing's happened there, and we need tax base to help pay for things in our future, so we don't need to burden the taxpayers. That's why we're trying to do it responsibly and to share that. I believe this TOD will create a new tax increment financing, it will create new tax increment just until 2042, so we can complete the projects that are necessary in SubArea A. We have to contribute towards doing all the infrastructure there, and that includes building the parks, building the community center, rebuilding these things, nothing has been touched there. We've got to make those investments. Letting the private sector participate them is a wise and responsible way. How we do it, the analysis, yeah, that's what we're doing over the last couple of years, that we're continuing to do, that ZBRI is helping us, and the staff, and the developer, and all our advisors and consultants. It's a very, very complicated process, I agree. It's not just going to, we're not just snapping our fingers, but we have to make these investments now. Why? Because by the time things get built, believe it or not, in the government world, 2042 is right around the corner, and we've got to start making these investments now. So really, I'm really thinking about this downtown holistically, these investments that we're making for our city's future, for the taxpayers, to get some young people in here, you know, so it's not just about one section or another, it's about a holistic vision of what our downtown should look like, and a tax base that pays for the improvements that we need in our future, not just one thing or another, really everything. There's other traffic improvements that we haven't talked about yet, maintenance enhancements, water and sewer, a traffic hub, I know Ms. Drucker talked about that, a traffic hub for the Bright Line TOD area, great, great idea, streetscape for SubArea A, pedestrian lighting, sidewalks. If the tax increment doesn't pay for them, then taxpayers have to pay for them directly, right? We have an opportunity to use these funds wisely, to invest them wisely, and to have developers participate in that. They're going to need to be amended and included in our downtown plan as we're doing this huge process right now. It's going to be part of that as well. I appreciate everyone listening to me all the time. I think about this a lot. When we have a couple of weeks off, it gives me a little extra time to really focus and do some research. I have an amazing graduate planner from FAU who's helping me, and an undergraduate intern as well. They're doing research basically around the clock. I wake up at 3:00 in the morning and I send them emails, and they respond. So they've been fantastic, really trying to help, because we're planning to do a great thing here, and it's going to be important that we don't overburden residents, because, again, when the CRA expires in 2042, that, we've got to make the investments now, so that the tax base grows by that time. And I know it's tough and it's challenging, but it's important, it's important that we do so. So thanks, everyone, for listening. With that being said, we'll adjourn at 3:27, and after a couple of minutes, we will come back for a workshop meeting.
Everyone, please take your seats. We're going to reconvene. Please be seated. Good afternoon and welcome to a workshop meeting of the Boca Raton City Council. It is Monday, July 14th, 2025. The time is 3:40. Our first item of business today is proclamations and presentations. We have none, so our next item of business is board interviews. And I don't see many of our applicants here, but we'll start with our applicants for the financial advisory board. Anyone present? Doesn't look it. Then we'll turn to the historic preservation board. We have no applications currently. The library board, any members of the public wishing to interview for the library board? Parks and Recreation Board, I do see at least one applicant here. Welcome, Ms. Viannali. Please come forward, give your name and address, and you'll have up to three minutes to tell us why you want to continue serving, and thank you for your patience.
Oh, thank you. It's been very interesting. My name is Julie Viannali. I have lived for 26 years at 4501 Northwest 26th Avenue in Boca Raton. I am currently a member of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. I was appointed by council in 2023. I've served for the last two years. I'm a retired attorney. I am also a very active volunteer at Gumbo Limbo Nature Center, one of the educators there, and it is one of my favorite locations. I am always happy to tell the guests, not to tell them, but to share with the guests who visit Gumbo Limbo, how remarkable it is that a city funds a park with live animals, with all of those educational offerings, and that it is a city park. So I'm very dedicated to keep our parks at the amazing level that they still have. And I think that as the demographics in the city change and as the city grows, I, as a member of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, want to help council keep our parks wonderful and respond to, as I say, the changing demographics, because the city's getting younger in addition to getting bigger. And so we're going to have to keep those amenities and expand the amenities for young people, more fields. We absolutely are going to need more fields, and fields take space. So I'm excited about my work on the board. I am anxious to remain on the board for another term, and I ask that my application be approved.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you. We will make the appointments tomorrow night. For you and anyone else who interviews today, you do not need to be present tomorrow night to be considered. We will consider you, and thank you for your interest.
Thank you.
Any other applicants for Parks and Recreation? Then we will turn to the next board, which is permitting and construction review board. We are still looking for an electrical, no, excuse me, it's a structural engineer now. We're looking for a structural engineer. So if you know anyone who wants to serve or are that person, please apply. And finally, sustainability advisory board, any members of the public here? All right, we will make the appointments tomorrow night. Anyone who did an interview, we might see them tomorrow. We do have, I think, all incumbents coming back. So at this point, we'll open the floor to public requests. I do have three cards, and two of them seem to relate to the downtown campus. You're free to speak now, but we will have a presentation from city staff and CBRE momentarily, and then a public comment there. You may wish to speak after they present, that's up to you. Mr. Ernst, Commissioner Craig Ernst, welcome.
Thank you. Craig Ernst here as resident, 1500 Parkside Circle South. Thank you very much. I came for the workshop meeting and I got a freebie with all that CRA, so thank you for all you do, and there's a lot of work put into everything. Just a quick couple of comments is that I think you guys have been extremely transparent and flexible. I ask that you continue with the flexibility with your learning of what you need and what you don't need for downtown, but keep on that great path. And thank you, Mayor Singer, for your efforts in New York. I'm trying to convince my kids to come home, and I think maybe someday they will, but not right away. So they're still there, and I appreciate what you're doing on that front. I think it's important that we support the business community in Boca, very much so. And I also support what you're doing downtown, because I recognize the CRA is going to go away at some point, and this has to be driven with a tax mindset of how are we going to keep our world-class facilities with a reasonable tax base and affording everything. But the real reason I came here today was about Gumbo Limbo. And I was fortunate enough to talk to Chrissy just shortly before this meeting. What's going on at Gumbo Limbo, we've knew kind of gone along for a long time, but it is one of our world-class jewels that we have, a top thing for TripAdvisor. And I remind everyone that this was founded by Gordon Gilbert, the science teacher from Boca High, and we need all the things that it has. Okay? And the district has funded Gumbo Limbo for many years. And so I do not appreciate what happened with Coastal Seward, but they're going on a different path. What I'd like to ask of the group here is to consider RFP-ing the twirl rehab, get some competition, get others involved in it, let's not lose it. I know it's expensive. Let's come to the table, the Beach and Park District has funded over a million dollars every year I've been on that board. So if it needs more money, let's make it happen. But I'd like to have a gift shop, that's what the kids walk away from. And I think we need all of those things just to make it part of Boca and continue it in some way or form, but I'd like to do it in a more collaborative way. And I remind everyone, the ILA with the district and the city is a 30-day out. You know, we need a new ILA that we can work together with. But you guys have some really big things on your agenda. I'm here just as one person on the district who want to help not hurt, take away from anything that you're doing, to help make things go faster, quicker, because you've got too many things going on, and I can tell you, as one trying to build the tower out at Gumbo Limbo, it was near impossible. Took the full ton time to do that, and it shouldn't have been like that. We need to make sure that we have the support for the rest of the staff there, and I think your staff is doing a phenomenal job on all this stuff. My last comment is related to the selection of your building for downtown. I know it's coming up on your agenda, unfortunately I won't be here for it, but I think you're making the right decision. I appreciate what you guys have done, the thoughtful process of purchase versus lease, and you'll do a great job with it. So kudos to the group for putting it all together. You've got a lot on your plate. As a Beach and Park District Commissioner, I want to help in any way I can. So thank you.
Commissioner, thank you. We appreciate your being here and our continued partnership with you and your colleagues. And Mr. Brown, I don't know if we're, I know we've had, I'm sure we're keeping the Beach and Park District informed as we look at opportunities to try to fill, deal with the unexpected news of the nonprofit declining to continue some activities as we look to get those back up and running.
Yes, we're in regular communication with Ms. Harms.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you. The other two cards I got were again from Rita Head and Judy Morrow, but again, if you'd like to speak now, you can. I'm going to suggest you just wait a few minutes, because you'll get the presentation, and then you can speak the first two then, very well. Anyone else wishing to speak? Ms. Unjiin?
Jonathan Unjiin, 6501 Congress Avenue. So again, to his point, the push, I've seen it in the New York Post, everywhere else relating to, "New Yorkers move down here." Where are they going to go? There's not much office space that's Class A, that's nice for these businesses. There's not much residential. If you're worried about selling a few multimillion-dollar homes in Royal Palm, great push, but the reality is, let's improve Boca Raton. And where this city continues to sit on their hands is this district that we're in. Everybody acknowledges, I get head nods, you got Ms. Drucker talking about how you got to put the pain on parking and, you know, more density is better in these transit-oriented districts. But hi, we're here, there's buses, there's trains, there's transit trolleys, there's, you name it, to get people to the Bright Line, to whatever. But you're still forcing property owners to basically get the whole block involved to pass density to a parking lot, to build something half the size of what you approved in the downtown today. So this is why the state preempted cities with the Live Local Act. This city, you've all seen a state senator who's going to be running for governor discuss what this city's done, and if you want to not acknowledge it, I'll bring the recording tomorrow, I'll have it up for you, about the interpretation of the Live Local. City attorneys, city managers have seen it, other council members, maybe not you, Mr. Mayor, because you don't answer me and have a meeting with me, as I've asked many, many times, or a discussion. You're too busy bringing people from New York. But the reality is, is there's, this is the prime area. Stop focusing, as one developer said, on just the Singer Center, the government center. Stop focusing just on that. There's a bigger city than just the downtown, and this is the ripe area, as you're about to buy a building next door to here, and realize the multifamily future of this area, because this is the ripest part to develop. You talked about the golf course over here off of Clintmore East, and when you talked about development there, you had a room full of people here, a room full of people saying, "Don't build on our golf course." This is the part of town that nobody comes to, nobody discusses, and it's time to do something that's meaningful for the future of Boca Raton, which is to increase the property rights, the units per acre, to develop in Boca Raton on the lot that you currently own, and that you don't need to ask your neighbors to make something that's financially feasible to build. Thank you.
Anyone else wish a public request? Again, we'll have a public comment after CBRE's and city's presentation. All right, we'll close this time for public requests. We'll turn to review of the regular agenda for tomorrow night. Council members, any concerns or questions you want to raise concerning tomorrow night's agenda? I'll start with Mr. Thompson.
No questions, thank you.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wigder.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, and I'll save mine for tomorrow. We've got a lot on the agenda, but I think it's best saved for tomorrow when those items come up. So now we'll turn to matters of items of council and public concern, and we have our government campus partnership opportunity. So I'll first turn to Mr. Brown, who'll introduce staff, then we'll have CBRE present, and then we'll have a public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Andy Lukasik, our deputy city manager who's spearheading the project, will give us a status update on the various components we're working on. And then we'll have an update on the city hall purchase options.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Is this on? I can't hear it. Is it on? Okay. So, so anything that I, well, our conversation is going to be pretty narrow today. It was really going to be focused in on the purchase option for the city service center. I do want to acknowledge the questions that were asked by the public, a lot of really good, thoughtful questions. thoughtful questions. And frankly, while we're making good progress as it relates to the discussions on the Master Partnership Agreement, and we're making, you know, we've got some productive dialogue going on, we haven't gotten to some of the detailed level of conversation to be able to answer some of the questions that were asked today. I'll be-- I'm going to be-- I'm going to like having the opportunity to be able to respond to what we can, but I'll-- and then also highlighting the fact that some of these things are going to be evolving as we start gathering more information, where we're finding the data that we receive, like financial information, infrastructure needs, some of the planning details that go along with the master plan. As that-- as some of that detail starts coming up, and I expect that within the next month, we're going to see a lot more coming your way. In fact, next month, I anticipate that we'll have a far more comprehensive report to you all. But right now, we're in such an early stage in the development of the Master Partnership Agreement that I don't have a lot for you in terms of those details. That said, we wanted to focus in on this really important milestone that we're approaching, which is the acquisition of property that'll serve not only as the hub for government services during the implementation of the campus redevelopment project, but also, you know, once the 30,000-square-foot new City Hall is constructed downtown, it'll be the house for a lot of our internal and some of our public-facing services as well. So you all know Will Portfolio. Will is Senior Vice President with CBRE. He's been our tenant rep throughout our valuation of properties throughout the city. We started in January looking at a number of properties and narrowing down the options that were going to be operationally best suited for us, as well as the best and most cost-effective options for us. So Will is going to kind of walk through that process, explain how we got to where we are today.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Lukasik. Will Portfolio with CBRE. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, City Council, city staff. I was engaged to help the city identify potential locations for the relocation of all the city services that are currently operated on the downtown campus in City Hall and in the base building to allow for the redevelopment of the long-term government campus redevelopment. We presented 15 options within the city limits of approximately 50,000 square feet and above, of which city staff toured 10. I want-- I have a deck here that we can go through, but wanted to highlight that we-- oh, this is going a little faster than-- we had shortlisted five of those properties after city staff toured 10 of the properties for negotiations of a lease and/or a purchase scenario. I wanted to note that these included both vacancies that were listed on the market as well as off-market opportunities. So as an example, 5300 Broken Sound was a property that was off-market that the current owner would entertain a sale of. And so we left no stone unturned in terms of identifying any possible opportunities. So this slide shows a summary of all those that we pursued. And then this map on this next page is all the properties toured by city staff. I wanted to note that, you know, of the 10 that we toured, nine of those are located in what we call the North Boca Raton submarket. So that's west of I-95, east of Military Trail, you know, the Yamato Road area to the south, and then all the way to the northern limits of the city. So as I mentioned, we shortlisted five of those properties, began negotiating lease and purchase scenarios. In parallel with those negotiations, CBRE's Workplace Strategy Team was tasked with evaluating the current utilization of City Hall. They conducted in-depth interviews with department heads across City Hall and developed a comprehensive space program of what the future City Hall could look like, and that included various scenarios from a larger-- smaller to a larger footprint. So at the end of this process, city council determined that the most fiscally responsible scenario would be to build a smaller footprint downtown, long-term for City Hall, and plus or minus 30,000 square feet, just given how high the costs to construct a new building are, and also pursue an acquisition of 6551 Park of Commerce, where the city services will all be relocated to. It's worth noting that this scenario, the acquisition of 6551 Park of Commerce, combined with building the smaller City Hall downtown, is half of the cost of building everything downtown and having 100-plus-thousand-square-foot footprint downtown. So that's 50% of the cost of what building and moving everyone back downtown would be. So that's really the work we've been working on over the last several months that have led us to this inflection point, this decision point by the city. In the deck, we included all the options we toured, comparable sales. These sales here are limited to owner-occupier sales. That means sales in which the buyer is buying a vacant property for the purposes of operating their business there. So those are not as prevalent as maybe investment sales, where an investor might buy a multi-tenant office property, but those are the comparable sales that we looked at because that's what the city's doing in this scenario. Those comps range from anywhere from $228 to $288 a square foot, and we're right in the middle of that, actually a little bit lower than the average at $247 a square foot to acquire 6551 Park of Commerce. So I'll pause there if there are any questions from city council or clarifications or from the public.
Questions? All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
That's all we have for you today, Mayor and Council.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brown. All right, very well. All right, thank you. Well, at this point, then, we'll open up the public comment. And again, as I said, Ms. Head and Ms. Morrow, if you'd like to come forward, then anyone else?
Hello. My name is Judy Morrow. I live at 1305 Northeast Fifth Avenue for over 35 years. My youngest daughter was born here. We love Boca Raton. We want to keep our tennis courts. And because of the future, so many people, you want to move here. We're going to need 10 or more. So my original petition that I had 404 people sign was to keep Boca Raton Tennis Center at the same site it's been at for 63 years. If you want to also build us more tennis courts at Meadows Park, that would be great. But I'm not sure-- I'm a little confused why the developer gets priority and we have to move to fit the developer. Also, I'm a little confused today. I did not know that it costs $4.2 million to move the children's museum. And then you just said, Mr. Singer, the mayor, you just said that this was done before the government redevelopment center. So when were they planning to move the children's museum and why? That's very important. So please tell us today or tomorrow at the 6 o'clock meeting. And we love our tennis. We want to keep our tennis. We want what we have, plus future extra. So also, Boca Raton Tennis Center, the money is still in there from years ago, the $550,000, and it has not been spent to fix up Boca Raton Tennis Center. And now, that's not enough money to build new tennis centers in Meadows Park. But I'm a little confused today, and I'd really, really, really like to know when the $4.2 million to move the children's museum, if it wasn't for the government redevelopment center, when was it proposed to be moved and why? And also, I'd like to know, at the beginning of the year, the developer gave one option, only one option, for eight tennis courts. And now, all of a sudden, there's three options, two, five, and eight. But it looks like you want to move us to Meadows. We just want Meadows plus what we have. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll respond at the end of public comment. Ms. Head?
No, I'll wait until tomorrow. Thank you.
You'll wait? Thank you. I'll wait till tomorrow. Thank you. Anyone else?
Jonathan Ungian, 6501 Congress Avenue. So the one thing I want to point out on this slide that Mr. Portfolio went over is the top right-hand corner, because I think those two on the top right are the two most glaring, one being 6601 Park of Commerce Boulevard, which sold in February of 2025 for $14 million. Now, I don't need to be an expert with, you know, many, many degrees in real estate to know that a corner lot is better than a lot that's not a corner lot when it comes to future development and anything else. So where-- so actually, so that your blue outline, the one below that, that you're going to buy for $17,400, okay, and the $14 million are actually one lot right now. If you look at the property appraiser's website, one lot. Where that divides, that would be good to know in terms of what the city's buying, how they're going to determine what parking lot where it is, because it's all one big parking lot in between the two buildings. But the bigger point I have a problem with is the corner lot sold for $14 million. Again, corner lots are better than a landlocked lot. Why are you paying a premium on the same lot? So again, I think these questions need to be asked because the main thing is CBRE's representing both sides of this. So as we have CBRE here, I own the building across the street, across from Amtech. It's a lot nicer than Amtech. You've never brought anybody from your company to my building. So the reality is, my issue is, is the consultant that you've brought here. I would like to see the negotiations on how you arrived at $17,400 for that property. I would like to see where their starting number was and how you negotiated it, because you have a representative here whose company is representing the other side as well. This has been my issue from day one. I've never been quiet about this. And if CBRE has a problem with anything I said, and anything I've said is not accurate, contact me or my attorney, because everything I've said is accurate. And it's upsetting to me to see that the city's paying for a landlocked lot $3.4 million more than what sold just four months ago, five months ago. Where is that boundary? What is that line? Whose property is bigger? That may make then sense for it, but as what I'm looking at here, it makes zero sense, other than you have a representative who is representing the other side as well, and incentivized for a higher number for the taxpayer, for the city, to buy the property. Thank you.
Anyone else?
John Pearlman, 498 Northeast Eighth Street. I think that John was bringing in some very important information there. I mean, he owns a building, he knows about office space, he's familiar with the market, he deals in this every day, and he can understand, with all of his experience, I mean, he has a career in this field. He can't understand why the city would be paying such a high premium for a less desirable lot. Also, there's -- he mentioned there's no information about the negotiation from the CBRE consultant or anywhere else as to how the city arrived at that number to pay that number. It's not transparent. He-- if it was available, he would have seen it, and he would have contemplated it, but it's not out there. Similarly, what's happening with the government campus? When I asked for financials about where they were, about the deal, the negotiations, Mr. the mayor said that there had been financials on the site from October of 2024. And that was at a recent meeting. We're already in July. When he said to go look at the financials from October 2024, that was in a June meeting, six, seven months later. And those numbers on the site from October 2024 were one-way numbers sent from the offices of Tara Frisby as to what they wanted to pay, with no input, negotiation, or response from the city of Boca. So similarly, with respect to the government campus, there's been no negotiation. Maybe there has been, maybe there hasn't. Nobody knows. It hasn't been made public. Mr. Singer, the mayor, said the most up-to-date financials on the matter were from October of 2024. And so when you tie all of this together, I think there's a high level of incompetence on the part of Boca Raton in negotiating financial deals. At one point, Mr. Lukasik was questioned by Mr. Thompson as to who was heading the negotiations for the city on the part of the government campus, which is probably the biggest deal in the history of the city of Boca Raton. And Mr. Lukasik responded that Mr. Kohler, the city lawyer, who I think recently joined the city's staff, was heading the negotiations. So based on all of this, it's my thought, and I don't think it's a stretch, to say that there's a high level of incompetence on the part of the current staff of the city of Boca Raton to be negotiating and dealing in business on these vast, large numbers, tens of millions, hundreds of millions of dollars. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, we'll close the time for public request. Mr. Brown, could we-- I'll ask you to respond on two things. One, first, the concerns about-- well, on all the things, but it was the children's museum. It was CBRE, and perhaps they can respond to some of those specifics, and then financials and negotiations.
Okay, with-- excuse me. With regard to the children's museum and its relocation, the city decided, I believe it's four years ago now, we moved the Building Department and associated functions out of City Hall into what we now call the Base Building, B-A-C-E, Building and Code Enforcement Building, which is the former city library at Second Avenue and Second Street, Boca Raton Boulevard and Second Street. That building needs to be replaced. Our intention was to build a new facility for the Building Department in the location of the children's museum, close to City Hall. This was before we were moving into the idea of completely redeveloping the campus. We were discussing the campus and whether or not we'd build a new City Hall downtown, how to go about it, et cetera. We were going to move the-- build a new structure for the Building Department and the associated functions in the location of the children's museum. That location was chosen because we were planning to allow for future of the campus itself. In other words, we weren't sure what else we might be doing. That's why we chose that location. The cost of moving the three structures that presently-- that constituted the former children's museum, Singing Pines, the Rick Katz House, and the Rickards House, is about $4.2 million. We're evaluating whether or not we really need to move all three buildings and where all three-- which building might need to go. It may not move from the campus. It may move from the campus. That's something we're still evaluating. With regard to the negotiations on the deal for 6551, I ask Will if he can give us any background specifically to share with the public on the negotiations themselves.
Sure. So I'm allowed to disclose what they were asking and all of that, right? In previous meetings, while negotiations were ongoing, we didn't address that.
Correct.
But I'm okay to do that. Okay. So the hard corner building, 6601, did sell for $14 million. It's 10,000 square feet less than the adjacent property that we're-- the city's going to acquire. It also-- a large portion of that first floor of that building is a data center. The buyer who bought that building bought it for the data center for their personal use. As I'm sure Mr. Ungian knows, there's a lot less data centers, owners, users out in the market. That severely limits the buyer pool on that hard corner building. So while, yes-- So while yes, the hard corner is typically more desirable, given the infrastructure in that building, 90% of the buyers or more are not interested in that. It would be a gut and redo, right? They want traditional office space, which is what we're acquiring next door. It's also up to the seller what they want to sell the, the building for, right? So they, they might have accepted a little bit of a lower number for the adjacent property, knowing it wasn't as desirable, but now looking to, to, to capture a higher price on this. We heavily negotiated this deal. They were quoting $19 million. We got them down to 17.4. They also had another interested owner, user, buyer who was negotiating with them as well as a full building tenant who wanted a 10-year lease, basically at sooner timing than the city is, is getting this building and with an option to purchase. So the market isn't static, you know? There are things that change every day. It's dynamic and there's competition from other tenants and other buyers. And we did the best we could and we still feel that this is a justified, you know, number to, to purchase this building at. With respect to some of the CBRE statistics, you know, I only represent tenants. I do not represent any landlords, not just in the city of Boca, anywhere, anywhere in Florida or anywhere. We do have number one market share on the agency side, which is the landlord listing side. CBRE's agency team, again, totally separate from me, represents 5 million square feet of office product in Boca. That's 42% of the market. In specifically North Boca, it's 3 million square feet, which is 53% of the market. So yes, we are going to run into properties that are also managed and leased by CBRE because we have dominant market share. I'm agnostic. I represent the tenant and the buyer, my fiduciaries to the tenant and the buyer. We presented all the facts and 6551 continued to come back as the number one solution for the city. And it just so happens it's a CBRE listing.
Yes, Mr. Wiger.
Question on that, Mr. Portfolio. Thank you so much. You know, we've been involved in this and I've been participating as much as possible to try to make sure we get the best deal for the taxpayers and for the city staff for their future. And Mr. Lukasik, I know as well. What's your opinion based on some of the, the finalists? What's your opinion on the level of fit-out that's needed at 6551 for the city services based on your space needs analysis, which I know you spent a lot of time doing, your own time doing space needs analysis for the staff? What's your opinion on the 6551 fit-out versus what would have to happen at the other properties to make it suitable for municipal employees and, and the public to potentially, if they need to, to go there?
Right. So 6551, while there will be some improvements needed, like for example, the city believes we need some additional ADA compliant restrooms to make it suitable for your use, but by far was the least amount of work required of any of the buildings we looked at. You know, we were looking at leases of shell space, raw space that required a full build-out that could be upwards of $150 a square foot. So it was a superior, more efficient building. We liked that it was two floor plates of 35,000 feet each that are sort of center core, restrooms in the center, a lot of the common space in the center that we can work with. We're also carrying a $75 a square foot number that we think is high. We're being conservative as we go through plans and, and walk through with GCs and subcontractors. We're going to refine that number and hopefully reduce that cost to the city. We're also carrying $50 a square foot for furniture. There's a chance we can secure some of the existing furniture, continue to lower that number. So the overall numbers that we're, we presented in our deck earlier should only come down. They will not go up. And we're trying to be ultra-conservative and refine the capital budget as we go along. But it was the most efficient building and with the least amount of improvements needed that we toured over dozens and dozens of tours.
And of course, I've been there. There's, it's just, it's, this is not a flag lot. It's its own lot. It's, there, there is probably a cross easement with the adjacent property, but it's, it's just a separate parking easement. It's, it's, you know, there's an island. It's, it's easily, you know, separable. It's not, it's not, it's not interwoven, you know, or anything like that.
Correct. And, and the, the buyer of the adjacent property, the seller had, had, has proven to us that they submitted an application to subdivide the folios into two separate folios. I don't know if Mr. Kaler wants to elaborate on that, but we, we are all aware of, of some of the issues that were raised and are, and are resolving them.
Yeah, I don't think we're at that point. Yes. Thank you.
And Mr. Wiger and Council, I'll just clarify for the PSA and then our due diligence phase, which is what we're in right now. These are the steps that are occurring. The contracting consent to the council tomorrow night provides for that. And the subdivision, not the subdivision, the, the condition that the parcel be unified was actually imposed by the city of Boca Raton when that development order came through a few years back. And so that is a condition of, of due diligence and part of what is required for the parties to proceed.
Thank you. And just one more question. If I may, Mr. Mayor. Our, our initial analysis on rebuilding City Hall in its current location downtown on a per-square-foot basis, can you just refresh my recollection? What, what was that number looking at on a per-square-foot basis?
And I think we're looking at $1,000 a square foot total. That includes a covered structured parking garage as a high-end number. So, you know, at one of the scenarios was 114,000 feet to move everyone down, back downtown would be 114 million dollars.
Right.
So this is half of that, the, the, the opportunity you're pursuing.
Thanks.
Thank you.
For the questions, Ms. Nagliss.
I just had a comment and Mr. Brown, it goes back to something that we talked about during my agenda review, but it was, so the base building will be moving inside, inside the structure as well. And the base building itself on our, was budgeted out for quite a high number, I think you told me, or Mr. Zervis had, had mentioned a number that's higher than what this is as well.
Yes, Councilmember Nagliss, that was budgeted at $30 million for the base building replacement. And that was going to be at the site where the children's museum currently is. That was the original plan to relocate.
Okay. Thank you.
For the questions, comments? All right, thank you. Anything to add, Mr. Brown?
No, thanks.
All right, thank you. All right. Well, that concludes that item. We'll now turn to city manager reports, and we do have an update on the next, next fiscal year budget.
Thank you. Jim Zervis, our CFO and deputy city manager is going to give us a, I would call it a preview of the budget for next year. It's our annually scheduled budget workshop. This is the second time we've done this recently. And I think it's an opportunity for everybody to understand what is planned in the budget. And Ms. Maguire here is here as well to support the effort.
All right. Good, good afternoon, Mayor and council members. As, as George Brown said, I'm Jim Zervis. I'm the chief financial officer and a deputy city manager with the city. And with me is Sharon Maguire. Sharon's our director of the Office of Budget Management. So we're going to be giving you today a preview of, of what this next fiscal year's budget looks like. There's been a lot of work that goes into this process, including all of our departments and Ms. Maguire and her staff. It's a tremendous amount of, of work. I can't really give them enough credit for, for what they've done, particularly this year, but, you know, in, in managing our budget process. I want to give you just a couple high-level comments before we go through the presentation here. The, the budget that you'll see here that's being submitted, it's a balanced budget. So it's revenues in the general fund, well, and citywide, equal or exceed the expenditures. So it's, it's a totally balanced budget. It also delivers on a millage rate decrease. So it has a slight millage rate decrease. And we've been able to present in total expenditures, what you'll see is about a $2 million reduction in total expenditures. So we've trimmed the budget back in order to balance it and deliver on a millage rate decrease. At the same time, we're funding all of our current service levels and we're making some real key investments in, in your strategic projects and priorities. And you'll, you'll get an opportunity to see that as well. So that's the high-level comments on, on what this budget plan looks like. And really, this is our first budget workshop. We're, we're really intending to just give you all in the public a, a look at what we're planning for this next fiscal year and be able to answer any questions for you. So our budget really does start with our core values. So our values, our mission, our vision, because really it is delivering upon that, that mission and values that, that financially is what the budget does. So it is built around, around these topics. So world-class community, where modern amenities and innovation embrace safe, beautiful, charming neighborhoods and a vibrant economy enriched by its exceptional recreational and cultural offerings. That is really the vision that we're trying to fund within the budget document itself. Additionally, we have, your, your board has adopted a number of strategic focus areas. And so we, each one of those are outlined here. And, and I bring these slides up because you'll see all of our budget, all of our capital budgets, all of our projects and priorities all tie back to one or more of these different focus areas that you've identified as being the areas that we should be focused on delivering for the community. So community safety, financially sound, vibrant economy, equality of life, world-class services, transportation, mobility, and growth management. So again, when we look at our budget requests, we do require that they all tie back to some kind of strategic priority that your board has, has given us direction on. From a millage standpoint, the draft budget includes a 3.6649 total millage rate. That is down from 3.6734 or down .0085 mils. And that's the total between operating and debt. So both, both operating and debt service millage, both saw respective decreases in their, in their millage. On a home with a, an average, with a taxable assessed valuation of $450,000, we, we maintain one of the lowest, if not the lowest, millage rate for a full-service city in Florida. And so that, that rate would calculate out at $1,649.21. Similarly, our fire assessment fee remains low and stable. So we haven't made a change in this. So we're, we're carrying forward the same fire assessment fee that we did in '24, '25. That's $155 per residential property. And you could see the corresponding commercial valuations. Now, this is really made possible by the increase in our total assessed valuation. So you can see our valuation increased by 7.51%. And that is a total, we broke the $40 billion assessed valuation level for the first time this year. And so, you know, 7, 7.51% increase. And this is a graph showing the added value from new construction. So this is about 700 and a little more than $729 million of added value from net new construction. So this is, if they tear something down and they build something in its place, you take off the old value and you add the new value. So it's net new. This number is the highest of any, any municipality in Palm Beach County. So we had the most net new construction value added out of any jurisdiction. We maintain the highest total assessed valuation, but I think this is one of the, one of the few times where we actually saw more added new value than West Palm and, and Palm Beach. From a general fund revenue standpoint, this is a comparison of the FY '24, '25 revenues on the left to the '25, '26 proposed budget. And you can see, you know, growth in ad valorem taxes of about $15 million. Some of that is, is the 7.51%. And then some of it is just how we are allocating funds internally. We've moved some project costs out of the CIP and into the general fund. So we moved some of the allocation of property tax to correspond with that in the general fund. So that's not all total net increase. I'll also point out that in the '24, '25 budget, we were planning on using about $14.6 million in fund balance to balance the budget. And you can see in this budget year, that number is zero, meaning that, that we have enough revenues in the general fund to pay for all the, all the budgeted costs. This is our general fund expenditures by department. So this is a, again, a comparison from '24, '25 to '25, '26. That's about a 3% growth in total costs within the general fund. And I'm going to walk you through kind of what's driving that increase. And again, overall, our budget's actually decreasing about $2 million. So in comparing our FY '24, '25 to the proposed '25, '26 budget, this is that 3% decrease in how we got there. From last year's budgeted expenditures, we had about $8.2 million of things that were really operational in nature, but they were within the capital improvement budget. And so we, we took the opportunity this year to, to take them out of the CIP budget and put those into the operations. It did add about $8.2 million, but really it's, it's where they're better classified. We then have COLAs and step increases. So most of these are contractual with our police and fire unions. And then it does make some assumptions for other employees as well. We'll be bargaining with SCIU shortly, shortly. So that's about $4.6 million. We have increased costs from our pension systems. That is $3.78 million. No changes really in, in any assumptions. That's just, just the result of higher payroll costs and, and the funding formulas for pensions. And then net new positions, there's about $330, $239,000 in net new positions. We'll walk through those in just a moment within the general fund. And then in order to balance the budget this year and not rely on fund balance, we did a cost-cutting exercise and we trimmed about $9.5 million out of the budget. We did this on a line item basis where Ms. Maguire and her staff went through and, and expertly saw areas where we had historically been underspending in our budget. And we took the opportunity to trim those back and work with departments to make sure that we weren't causing some kind of service level impact. And so, so departments are still fully funded, but we did, we were able to, to do some, some cost trimming on our side to balance the budget. And that's how we get to $254.8 million budget. Looking at what this looks like at the end of the year, it's balanced. So, you know, we're going to start out, we're projecting a starting fund balance of about $85.6 million in the general fund. Revenues and expenditures are the same, so no change. And you can see how we have that allocated. We have about $170,000 that we have to keep in, in reserves for this agreement with the Army Corps of Engineers. Then we have a 10% disaster recovery contingency. So money that we have in case we, we need to respond to a hurricane, most likely. It's $25.4 million. And then we have another 10% fund balance reserve set up in accordance with city policy. The difference is $34.48 million. And that would be the available fund balance. So new programs, there are a couple, there's, there's about three new positions in the general fund. In total, there's 15 new positions throughout the city, and they are tied to specific strategic initiatives. That brings our total full-time employee count up to 1,717 employees. So that's what's fully funded in this budget. We have a traffic, and I'll walk through these just because these are new initiatives. So traffic infraction enforcement program, that is speed cameras in school zones is, is what that would be. And then we are adding a position to help manage the special event permit in order to improve that process. And then from a position standpoint, we have a customer service rep two. And then from a position standpoint, we have a customer service rep two that will work with, with our parking and, and beach, the beach, really the beach stickers. So the, that renewal process, we're moving that from rec over to finance and this person's going to be managing that process as well as doing some other parking related items. We have a planner two. This is focused around the live local, the tracking and monitoring of, of the different affordability covenants and requirements. So that's, that's what that position is. And then we're adding a recreation superintendent to help build out the management structure in the recreation department. Outside of the general fund, we have one assistance sanitation superintendent. The beach and park district is funding a community accessibility program and water and sewer operational funds have five new positions. These will be brought on at different times during the year, but really it's part of their investment into our, our utility network. One in the information technology, a development manager to help us focus on our AI initiatives specifically, but, and, and work on our just application stack in general. We have a workers' comp, workers' compensation fund position. And then we have two positions funded through the CRA. One is an additional police officer. So we are adding a police officer here. We, your, your council added a police officer mid-year. So in the last 12 months, this will have added two CRA-funded police officers operating in the downtown. And then a cultural arts administrator. So that's kind of an operational, a look at what we're doing on the operational side. The budget also includes our CIP, our capital improvement program. That's a five-year program. It's about $1.3 billion over five years. So this next year is $282 million. You can see it allocated here by different departments. I'm going to highlight just a few of the kind of main projects that we've got funded within this budget. There's a lengthy list that, that we can provide separately that breaks all of those down at the project level. So here is kind of major projects for the CIP this next year. The city services building, which we were just discussing, $26 million. That would fund the, everything related to that. So it would be the, not only the purchase, but it'll be whatever the improvements are. I mean, that, that would be included in this budget. FFNE, the, the furniture fixture and equipments, as well as the actual relocation. And then we have transit-oriented community redeveloping downtown, $24 million. And that is CRA-funded. And I should say, all these projects have a, kind of a mix of different funding sources. Some are internal funds such as the CRA or the building fund, and some of these are externally funded grant projects and things. We have the railroad crossing. So this is that Jeffrey Street crossing, building out that crossing and closing of 28th Street Crossing. We have a municipal fleet garage and associated site work. So that's a challenge we've been working on for a while. It's pretty, we're, we're pretty limited on space there and, and we need, we need to do some work in order to service all the vehicles and store everything. We have our police department headquarters project, which, which we've talked about and I'll be back before your council in September to really discuss in more detail. This just gets the engineering, engineering and design paid for really for the, the $10 million. And then CRA roadway and sidewalk projects, east-west pedestrian connectivity, you know, consultants and implementation. So that doesn't build it, that plans it and maybe identifies what, what a good solution is going to be on dealing with our east-west connectivity issues. Water sewer buildings, water treatment facility improvements, wastewater upgrades. So critical infrastructure, that's the ISIP, ISIP projects are funded here as well. So investing in our utilities, which comes in these, these four buckets. So as we look at how the budget actually aligns with our strategic focus areas, I've got a couple of slides here for each different strategic focus area where we have identified any new positions or projects that fall with under these categories. So public safety, community safety, we're adding the one police officer as we discussed. And really the police department headquarters project is probably the, the dollar value, the, the single biggest project within this category. We are funding fire rescue upgrades at different fire facilities, police service upgrades, innovative technology with artificial intelligence, security enhancements and expansions in our utility, in our utility departments specifically, and an air compressor for our From a financially sound aspect, we are, there's a, there's a few different investments here. A lot of those have to do with, with our critical infrastructure and our utility departments. So investing in those systems so we keep long-term costs down and provide world-class services. So you'll see a lot of these overlap between one or more different strategic focus area. And, and this is, this is a good example that, the last one on here is our transit-oriented community redevelopment downtown. This is, this is the project that, that we've all been talking about. It actually crosses over, I think, almost all our strategic priorities in some way or another. And we talk about financially sound and building out a project that can generate that ongoing tax revenue to help pay for, you know, all of the, the things that we're, we're looking at building and to pay for those, to maintain those future service levels as the CRA phases out. It is a, it is a critical long-term investment. From a quality of life standpoint, a couple of positions that focus on quality of life, the sanitation superintendent and the aquatic maintenance technician. So we keep our aquatic facilities functioning properly. And then some projects such as Meisner Park improvements that are scheduled. And I know we're going to be before the CRA board here in August to go through a more detailed report on the CRA budget. So you'll be able to, to see exactly what's planned in the, in the CRA next month. And then boardwalk renovations, investments at the Gumbo Limbo Nature Center, and again, our, our TOC. World-class services. So there is a, a number of the new, of new positions are tied to our ability to deliver world-class services. What we do requires people to do the work. And so these are some of the areas where, where we, we see additional investment is, is needed. And then projects from a world-class services standpoint, investing in our infrastructure, facility upgrades at utilities, the city services building as we build out that, that to service the public from PFOS removal upgrades, sewer system repairs, the Jeffrey Street rail crossing and 28th Street, and security enhancements. And, and that's for utility services. And some of these projects are continuing here on the world-class services. Also, you know, these were also already mentioned under the financially sound section, and they also tie in with, with growth management when we look at actually making sure we've got capacity within our utility systems to deliver service. Transportation and mobility. So we've got the, as mentioned before, the traffic infraction enforcement program that's going to be launching this year, speed cameras in our school zones. And then we've got a number of specific projects around transportation of mobility. We're funding further work on our Vision Zero demonstration projects. We've got the El Rio Trail enhancement, downtown Pimental Park Road connectivity and mobility, CRA east-west connectivity, a lot in the downtown, traffic signal arm maintenance upgrades, CRA parking analysis and planning and mobility and connectivity improvements. And with regard to growth management, we are adding the planner two position as I'd mentioned, and we've got, you know, a few, few utility projects that are really aligned with growth management as well as the TOC project. The budget in total is, it's, well, I'm just going to hear, this is a citywide revenue source. So this is, this is citywide. We, we looked at the general fund budget in detail. This is a, a take, this is a look at the citywide revenue sources. In total, we're projecting about $793 million in, in proposed, you know, proposed revenues. That's $555 million in operating revenues, things that actually come in from the outside. And then as we have our internal transfers and when we pull money out of CIP funding to actually do a CIP project, for example, that's where, that's what falls in that reserve revenue line item. So that's about a $20 million increase on the operating total and about a $334,000 decrease overall. From an expenditure standpoint, citywide expenditures are budgeted operating expenditures at $736 million. And totals, if you include transfers out and reserves, 793 million. So here's the $2 million decrease in operating expenditures that I was referring to at the top of the presentation. And you can see that same analysis by department. So these are, this is citywide. So this is all funds of the city and all departments. And this is the, that $2 million reduction in expenditures. You can see that the main, the, the main increases in costs there are really public safety related. And then development services, and that's just project related. So we, all the other departments were largely trimmed back in our cost-cutting exercise this year. And that is the end of my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Zervis. Councilor has questions. Mr. Victor.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I know a lot of work has gone into this and, and obviously with the completion of the audit and obviously the current ongoing year, the stuff that we're doing, and then looking at the future years, you have those kind of three time travel machines happening at the same time. So I appreciate you and the staff doing this, this hard work for the, the people and their, and their future. We talked about, I, I can't recall if it was a strategic planning or not, about maybe getting a little bit more refined about, you know, activity-based costing and really kind of looking, you know, analyzing what certain things cost. You know, an example might be golf, you know, matching revenues and expenditures versus, you know, just expenditures versus that big bucket from the parks department and things like that. Obviously the CRA, you know, the fact that a percentage of development services, planning, personnel from development services is, you know, is responsible for a portion of the CRA for the projects that come in there, but not really activity-based, really kind of analyzing that. Can you talk a little bit more about how we're going to start implementing that into the budget in the future of the city?
Sure. And so we've, we've just completed the, an update to our cost allocation methodology. So that's, we had a system change a few years ago that, you know, that we hadn't, hadn't got that new systems methodology in Oracle to work with our cost allocation plan. So, so we've, we've got that done this year and that really helps us look at how much of our indirect costs, right, are alloc, allocated to different operating parts of the city. So that's, that's, that's an important one because that, as an example, I mean, that looks at, you know, what does it cost issue a building permit? And, and not just the, the person who's issuing the permit, but your time, my time, you know, the indirect costs that go to support the issuance of that building permit. So we've got a citywide cost allocation plan that was completed this year. That's, and that is included in this budget and it helps to support any kind of transfers between funds. And so, so that's, that's probably at the core, you know, the, the best way to answer that. We do have a very elaborate financial accounting system. So we maintain, you know, a number of different funds. And so it's not, you know, golf's a good example, although golf's in our general fund. We can slice and look at the golf revenue and costs really it, all the time. You know, we can run reporting at that level. So we, we do, you know, we don't track all of our activity-based costing, but, you know, I, I think at the core, we're trying to make sure that, that we, one, know what our costs are and can allocate them appropriately to the different activities. You know, as I mentioned, that indirect cost allocation is done, well, we're going to be looking at updating a, you know, updating the user fee schedule next. So all that flows together. So now you, now you have the cost information that's fully loaded so that we can really know what our costs are when we go to, to, you know, recommend any changes in the user fee schedule that'll, that will be coming up later this year.
That's awesome. No, thank you. That's, that's very informative. I think, yeah, I, I think even myself, I don't really appreciate what goes in to all of the work that just comes into this presentation sometimes because it's just tremendous amount of back office accounting that has to happen there. So, no, I appreciate that. And all of this planning and all of this research and all of this analysis and the cost-cutting that we're doing that, is there, is there anything in your opinion that's glaring that, that we should not have cut in order to balance it? But is there something you think, well, we, you know, we really struggled on those light items of the $9 million that you're saying is being cut from services? Is there anything that you think is, is critical that, that, that maybe we should revisit?
So no. No, because we, you know, we looked for savings that was, that we could identify as already being there. We didn't go, you know, we didn't cut any funded position as an example, or I didn't take away money that's being used by a department. What we did is look where there was room in the budget and just trimmed it back. It, and I met with the department heads to review all of the recommended cuts. And there were a couple where we had a discussion and we, we didn't realize that they were planning something new next year. And so we left funding in the budget. So no, I don't see anything in there that would cause a problem. I think where you'll see it, and it's not a negative impact, but our, historically, we've, we've, our budget to actual presentation has been pretty, pretty glaring, right? So our revenues come in much stronger and our expenses come in much lower when we go at the end of the year after the audit, you know, we look at the, the general fund budget to actual report. And so what I think you'll, what I think will happen is this next year, that will be a lot tighter. So, and I, and that was really, one of my goals was to try to get our budgeting closer to, to where we are in, in reality and better to reflect what's going to happen, just as a planning and, and budget tool. But I think you will see a, a smaller variance at the end of the year because of it.
Thank you. Last question, Mr. Mayor. That's going backwards. Going forward in our strategic plan and all those things, is there anything that we're planning that's listed in those budgets that we're, that we're looking at doing strategically that you think that we should not be doing?
No. I mean, I, no, I don't think so. I mean, everything in here is in this plan for a reason. And, and we're constantly reevaluating the approach we're taking on things. So, you know, the city hall discussion's a good example of that, right? Do you, at one point, we were talking about rebuilding the entire thing downtown. And then now we have this hybrid approach where we've identified the ability to save pretty significantly on the cost by buying an existing building for, you know, a significant part of our, of our workforce. You know, the, the municipal services garage, so that, you saw that in here for $15 million. Well, when I, when I, when I started with the city, that was in at $30 million. And that didn't, didn't make sense to me. And so we took another look at what the need was and how we could approach the problem differently. And we resized the project to meet the need and we were able to cut the cost in half. So I don't think there's anything in there that I just don't think should be in there. But there are going to be things that we'll want to, we want to be creative in our approach in order to deliver the project at the best value we can to the community.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Any further questions? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. Mr. Zervis, I noticed towards the end of the presentation, you had talked about a modest decrease overall in the city's revenues coming up in 2026. And the light item associated, I think, most significantly with that decrease, modest though it is, fall under the categories of administrative revenue and shared revenue local unit, to the point like for 14 million or so for administrative revenue and 4.4 million in for shared and local. shared and local unit revenue. You know, between the two of them, that's $18 million, which effectively wipes away and then some the increase in the ad valorem taxes that we generate in revenue for that year. Could you just elaborate on, a little bit on what falls into those two buckets, administrative revenue and shared revenue?
Yes. So, and this is why I have Ms. McGuire up here to bail me out, but I believe a lot of it is, was budgeted repayment from the, or repayment from the CRA. Is that the right? You want to elaborate?
That's correct. That was, yeah, from the repayments that have been being made to the general fund from the CRA have mostly been paid, so that has decreased.
That's the $14 million change that you were asking about?
Understood. Okay. Thank you, guys.
Further questions? All right, well, thank you. And Mr. Brown, do you want to highlight now our budget sequence of events, please? If you have it?
I don't have it with me. But we will be having a CIP presentation. In August, we have the CRA budget workshop, similar to this, will present basically what's planned for the coming year. And in September, I don't have the dates, but we'll be happy to share them. They're on the website, I believe. And it includes a tentative budget presentation and a final budget presentation, as well as we will have the user fee schedule and the CIP.
Very well.
All in September.
All right. Thank you. Budget season. Mr. Wegter?
Oh, yeah. And just my recollection, Mr. Brown, is we have to have two budget meetings back-to-back, or I forget what the rule was.
We have a tentative and then a final.
And they both have to happen before September 30th?
They happen before September 30th, and they can't happen the same night as the school district or the county. There's a lot of coordination that Sharon's staff has to go through every year.
Right, right, right. Okay, thank you.
Very well. Further questions? All right, thank you. It's still your report, Mr. Brown?
Just to, again, thank Jim and Sharon and the staff at OMB for the hard work that they did this year, particularly in working with the departments to find other ways of delivering service than traditional and saving funds while doing it. That's it for today. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney reports?
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. I have no report.
Thank you. Councilmember reports, I'll start on my left with Mr. Thompson.
No report. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Akles?
Thank you, Mayor Singer. Just a couple of things. I wanted to, of course, thank you, Mr. Zervis and Ms. McGuire, for that presentation and all the work that went into that. And I also wanted to thank staff for the fabulous Fourth celebration that we had on the Fourth of July. We did four amazing events. Staff did a lot of work. There was a lot of pivoting between the weather all day long and watching the weather, and everything just went off really, really well. So I want to thank you, staff, for all the hard work and everyone who attended, including the about 4,500 people that came to our fireworks show, which was wonderful. Mr. Thompson and I were there, but we did miss the rest of you. So I also wanted to bring up a reminder to sign up for Alert Boca, no space, one word, Alert Boca, to 38276. I always remind people of that, to stay updated and everything going up in the city and the My Boca app on your phone. And I wanted to just ask, I talked to Mr. Brown a little bit, and I think we're going to have an upcoming presentation on parks and rec, or I wanted to talk about activating Wildflower Park and what ideas we could come up with with activating Wildflower Park. And I know several of us have brought things up, and just to have more of a discussion on that when it comes up. And then the last thing with the government campus, as Mr. Zervis was going through the budget, you know, it just really hit me again how everything that we're going through, the ongoing process with the government campus proposed redevelopment, it really supports all of the priorities which we set in our strategic planning, community safety, financially sound, vibrant economy, quality of life, growth management, and transportation and mobility. And I appreciate that it is being thoughtfully, you know, thoughtfully thought out during this process and will continue to be. And, let's see, is there anything else? I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wegter?
Further, thank you.
Thank you. And I just wanted to share, I believe, we have set for our special council meeting on August 12th to talk about city manager candidates. We were holding some of that time because not everyone is available in the morning. I believe all of us may be available in the morning, so Mr. Brown's going to canvass that and just see if we might move that earlier to allow more time for us. And with that, I just wanted to say a word of thanks. We got a lot of local and national media, just by being the right place at the right time, a story with one of our businesses, with one of our great corporations here, Newsmax, and some timing with some national political efforts gave us, by current count, more than $3 million of earned media for the city of Boca Raton in terms of positive media mentions about our quality of life, low taxes, and why businesses are flocking here, or hopefully should flock here. So we will continue to reach out to businesses to fill the Class A office that we have, and that may be underway, and provide more opportunities. But I wanted to thank the city manager/mayor's office, and Ms. Herman, and our communications team for their nimble work in trying to respond to an opportunity. And also thank our local media, who I see in the room as well, for your great coverages too. So thank you. With that, we are adjourned, and we'll come back tomorrow night for our council meeting. Thank you, and good evening. It is 5:00.